Good for that. All right, let's go ahead and get started.
Dave, does that mean you're bringing heat?
A lot of heat. No, I think we're pretty good spirits today. All right, today is Thursday, August 31st, last day of the month. It's one o'clock PM. This is our weekly work session and with me is Commissioner Sharon Ballows. Commissioner Jim Harvey will be joining shortly. We have the presenters here on the agenda item two. We're going to start with a discussion or action on approval for the minutes that we held work session on August 21st, 2023. Commissioner Ballows? I, all of the favor. In motion. All right, let's go to the two, let's go to one o'clock, agenda item two, discussion regarding that. Sell me substandard road agreement. Gary Myers is with us, Tucker's with us. Charlie, I don't see. Cortland Erickson's here, Sean, Rick Grover, Brad Brown is here and Steve. Did I miss anybody? Think that's it.
That's it.
Okay, so Gary, you're listed first. Do you want to start?
You bet, Commissioner. So we've been working with Brad. Oh, boy, Brad, I don't even know how long, but a little while. Brad's got a development called Anselmi Acres. The biggest issue here is kind of, it came down to interpretation of our substandard road ordinance. So we initially met with Brad and we thought we had a good solution outlined and then as as always, I always meet with you guys and check with Cortland first before we move forward with any decisions. And in discussions with Cortland, we started looking at how our, how our ordinance was interpreted. And we kind of, we brought planning in to kind of have that discussion with us and realized that I probably was interpreting the ordinance incorrectly. And so in reading through our ordinance, basically what it says is you can see from the handout here in front of you where the development is.
Gary, maybe back up. This is another one of those Brad Brown.
Oh, boy.
Oh, we've seen these before. Is it substandard nature 1400?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And please, Steve, feel free to jump in and cut me off if I'm leaving details out because it's helpful. So 1400 South is where Anselmi will be tying out into. All of its traffic will route out into that. And that's where the current condition of 1400 is. Well, let's be honest, we'll call it is, it's not great. It's a tight road. What would be measured, Tucker, 20 feet?
20 feet places 21. I'd say probably average 21.
So we're, we're definitely substandard on that road and it's, it's tight. Um, as you go west from Anselmi subdivision entrance, we actually have ditches on both sides of the road and it's, it's a little tricky. So.
1400 north or 14?
1400 south. Did I say north, Commissioner?
No, just making sure.
That's all right. Good check. So as you, and so, yeah, it's safety is a concern, always a concern in my world. And so as we started looking at it, we're and Steve, I'd kind of looked to you to help us interpret the, the ordinance of the substandard road. You guys have a better handle on that than we do a little bit.
And the last two pages of my printout for you are this section where we talk about how a substandard road needs to be upgraded if somebody wants to develop on it. Now, this, this whole ordinance came from, well, a few years ago it was adopted because we had several subdivisions that were being developed. Dead end roads, substandard roads. Do we want to force a developer to upgrade the entire road before they can put any lots on there? We realized that we have to be careful in what we are asking for. We can only ask for what's roughly proportionate and reasonably related to the impact that a subdivision has on a road. And so a few years ago, you guys might remember Charlie came to you with this, let's see, I mean, it's a couple of pages, but it was a way for developers to move forward and develop on these substandard roads to get them what they want, but it also gets the county what it needs, which is upgraded roads in a lot of these cases. So if you look at the code and Gary, I don't know that you interpreted it wrongly. So I, maybe you can cut in as needed there. There's a way that we figure out how much Brad's portion is going to use. And unfortunately for Brad, it's not just outright from his lots. Because he's doing 37 lots, he's going to have more of an impact than just his three lots that front on 3700. All of the people that use, that will live in that subdivision until another road is connected, will use 1400 South. They will have an impact on it. And so we can't just ask him to improve what's out in front, but we also can ask him to improve the entirety of 1400 South. So what the ordinance says to do, you look at this first page, it says, in order to figure out this cost, the developer you take his footage on a substandard road and you go to the nearest intersection. And so you go west to 4300 West and that distance from, from 4300 West to his westernmost boundary is 900 feet. So the ordinance says from that 900 feet, you need to figure out how many lots can be developed. And how many lots can be developed? Tucker, you said it was six and then plus Brad's 37. This is, this, these next couple of pages here. Six plus 37 is 43. Cost estimate on the total cost from 4300 all the way to Brad's easternmost portion, easternmost boundary. What does that cost? We figured 230,000 and that is on the second. 230,000 for somebody to upgrade that whole road.
Well, this southern portion of it.
The southern portion. It's tough for us to ask Brad to do all that 230. And so what we do is we take those six lots that could be developed, we include his number, 43 lots. We divide that 230 by 43 to figure out a per lot cost. We times that number, which was about 5,000.
Yeah.
By the number of. 5300 roughly.
5300 by the number of lots that Brad is proposing, which gets us to this 198. And that's currently what Gary and Tucker, I believe, are looking at, asking Brad. This is your portion that you need to pay to the county to upgrade the road. Either, there's a few options, Gary. If I remember right, we can take in that bond, we can hold on to it and we can do that work. The other option is we'll take in it, taking it as a financial guarantee. We'll have him do the work.
Right.
The third option is to do a deferral agreement, which I don't recommend doing.
Neither do we, Commissioners.
And I think this is probably where, where Brad has maybe some issues with, is it, is it the number 200?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's two things in there and Gary and I had discussed this before. One was, you know, when we, when we, that 230 number came from a proposal that we gave him for full build out. But the, the road there, I mean, county doesn't own it. There's no right of ways. That would not be available to be improved until somebody develops, at which point they would be responsible for their, their frontage. So we had discussed, well, what's really going to happen here? We need life safety. We need 26 feet of asphalt so that people driving in there are safe. This road is in good condition. And when Tucker and Steve, when you guys went out there, that's about what we could actually do right now. So then, so that's one issue. The other is the reasonable proportionality, you know? We, where we've got, you know, based on this area, if we're responsible for 86%, I just, you know, that doesn't pass the sniff test, you know, when there's, you know, case law, that's a pretty obvious, that's not reasonable thing. So, so Gary and I, when we sat down and talked about it before Gary dove into the, to the code, we're like, okay, well, your proportionality, what is that? And our engineers had estimated, okay, if all this got fully built out, we'd be about 44% of that. And so we left that meeting thinking, okay, 44% of the asphalt improvements. And then, you know, then he got to Cortland and yes, strictly interpreting the code, that puts us at 86% of the 230 number.
Could I interrupt for just a second, Brad? The reason Brad's percentages numbers change in what he thought he'd be proportionately responsible for versus what we did is it, it came down to interpretation of the code. As we looked at it, if you look at the second page where we broke down the costs.
Right.
We were thinking that lots going, as you approach the intersection there, the max you could fit on there is six lots that front that road. As Brad and, and his team looked at it, they based it off of what the zoning could be, could be allowed for. And that's why they failed.
Saying six as a current exist, current zone, which is probably not realistic. Well. Because these guys got a rezone.
They did get a rezone and so they're looking at it as, however, it's, this is not currently rezoned the same as Brad's.
No, I get that.
And so a lot of that difference, I'm just identifying why Brad had different numbers.
What I'm saying, when that piece develops, it'll be similar to everything else we see. They're going to come in and ask for an RE 15.
I'm sure.
So I don't think it's realistic to say there's going to be six. I think it's realistic to say, you know, at the end of the day, there's going to be whatever it is with an RE 15, whatever acreage is, based on 15,000 square.
And I think that sounds reasonable, but I think the code, the way the code reads.
Yeah, I understand what the code says, but we've been through this before. I remember the Ogden Valley situation with the east of the monastery there southeast. Is we talked about, you know, hopefully he's got to come in and take three miles of road to improve it for.
That's right.
For six lots.
That's right.
Makes no sense. So you're just, you're just putting a big, you know, no in front of it.
I'm being the great big hammer of the bad guys, what I'm saying, Commissioners, not out of joy or pleasure, but just the way the ordinance is read, that's what it turns me into essentially.
And he's putting a bad spot because the ordinance also says at the discretion of the engineer, you know, and that's what.
Well, I think it ought to be discretion of the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what Commissioners.
You are saving me. I'll take a deep breath now. Thank you.
Well, number one, this ought to be discretion of the commission, not, you know. You know, you just don't need to be put in that hot box.
It is definitely that.
We, we signed up for it, so that's our fault.
The ordinance allows us to put an agreement together, right? Development agreement. So we could do something that says that the numbers are different.
Yeah.
We just have to put it.
Well, I, you know, I think this comes down to the same thing we've dealt with in similar cases. They should be responsible for that subdivision, you know.
Proportion issue.
Proportion issue. Sure. I don't think we can, you know, I don't think it's fair to say, okay, take care. And then for them to pay for that and then try to get collected to pay back in the future.
Right.
That's a deferral agreement on them, which I don't necessarily favor that.
Right.
I mean, I, I like to have a clean cut. They're paying for what they are and they don't have to depend on somebody else coming in in the future and repaying them. Or repaying the county.
Well, and for the record, we were merely trying to follow the ordinance as it reads, right? It was nothing personal or sided.
Talked about it, it made sense. And then we got.
And then as I got looking at it and interpreting, I'm like, oh crap, I don't think I was interpreting it the way I should have.
Hold, hold on a minute.
But anyway.
I got a comment on this when you're done or ready.
I'm done.
Are you sure?
I'm positive. Well, my, go ahead.
What's this road out here on the west?
4300.
Which is it? 4300?
4300, same road in front of the new high school.
So if I'm going to buy this piece of property, I'm not going to enter everything like he, like, so these other parcels going down this way are all going to have to enter off of 1400 South. Right? There may be a connecting road that you guys put up through here that takes you to 4300, right? In the plan. There may be a road that ends up going, that stubbed it, hammer headed or something and the, well, to the west, right? Maybe one out to the east. Too, right?
Yeah.
So these guys, when they come in here, they're going to come in here with 40 something lots or whatever that is. They're going to say, hey, listen, most of our traffic ain't going to go on 900. They're going to give us the same song and dance as Brad did. You know, they're saying, that's not fair to us, the impact, unless it is fair because they're going out onto 4300. I don't, maybe you don't understand then.
So Commissioners, there's a couple of ways to look at this. I want to make sure it's very clear why the ordinance says what it says because we just adopted it last year.
Right.
And I think Commissioner Jenkins was a primary driver in the conversation on why it's.
That's kind of worries, that's.
And a lot of this came down from what was going on on 3600.
Right.
So in it, let's just put together a hypothetical scenario. A hypothetical scenario, you've got a piece of property that's isolated from any street, right? Two miles. And that developer, if they want to develop that piece of property under their zone, they've got to build their own street, right? We've got street standards of a specific width, specific cross section. And in this case, for a residential street, we would say at a minimum 60 feet wide curb gutter sidewalk. And we would say that because that subdivision at the end of that two miles is creating 100% of that impact on that runway. Because there's nothing else there, right? It's 100% of the impact. And so the ordinance is written away where each subdivision really has to stay on its own two feet. If this property here on the corner, 43 and 1400 never develops or takes a very long time to develop, then you're going to have all the kids who are in this subdivision that Brad's developing not have sidewalks out there for quite some time. So the idea is, it's unfortunate, it doesn't seem fair, but it's first come, first served. If I pick up a piece of property on Washington, empty piece of property, I don't have anything to curb gutter sidewalk yet. It's done. And so I'm coming in on the coattails of somebody else who already paid for that infrastructure. And so that's kind of how, there's got to be a horizon on where the cutoff time is for a developer to be responsible, for example. I would say if a development is going in and we're, we're in the frontier, right? We're in an area that doesn't have a lot of infrastructure. I would think it'd be fair to say that the first guy going in has a burden of the infrastructure. What would also be fair? If we think that other development in the area is imminent, then they'll get a payback arrangement of some sort. If another property owner comes in and decides to get access off of that runway, for example, get a payback arrangement. So that's, when you're developing in rural country, it's expensive to do.
Well, no, hold on. Okay, I thank you for that. But then I appreciate what Commissioner Faur said about those six lots that were up three or 500, whatever, feet up in the valley, up in there. And that guy had to, you know, if he wanted to do that.
Certainly.
But here's the, okay, so I've said my piece. I'm good. Here's what I don't think is fair. But the rest of the county should have to pay for any of that development. I don't think you should have to pay or I should have to pay or you should have to pay. Just because, you know, eventually, and Brad, at your personal residence, you shouldn't have to pay. Because really, when it comes down to it, you and your neighbors are all going to pay this much. And me and my neighbors are going to all pay this much if the county ends up doing it. So what's the, what's the best and fair way to do this? I hate to say, I appreciate frontier and not this software, frontier, frontering and having to do that kind of stuff, you know?
We wanted to be cautious because we knew from a Commissioners level, 1400 has been a subject of discussion that we shouldn't be approving a lot of development on it because it isn't developed to a reasonable standard. So we also didn't want to run afoul of the Commissioners.
I know that road out there. There's no, it's a, it's a country road out there. That's out there where they make best horseshoe guy in the world's out there.
Really?
Alex Hooper. He's really good.
The planning commission also made it a point when they recommended approval of the lease. That I believe one of their findings was that one of the benefits of this rezon is that the developer will actually be making upgrades to the systems of the roads. If they, if they wanted to put that as a condition of approval and we scared them out of that, we said, don't require, don't put a condition of approval to approve 1400. We already have an ordinance that requires that. And so they were under the perception when they recommended approval that our ordinance would require full curb gutter sidewalk and street of this developer.
From, from.
From, from the intersection.
From the intersection.
To this property.
Which, and just so we're clear, Canada have that road. That's not a possibility. I mean, the owners own out to the street and there's a prescriptive easement. They would have to somehow get that right away from those.
Don't we have a right of way on 1400?
We do have a right of way. We don't own the full right of way. And so we do have a prescriptive right if they own to the center of the road. If above and beyond what we already have, we'd have to purchase.
So what width do we have now?
Well, we got 21 feet of asphalt.
What, what easement, what do we have?
Well, there's nothing. Yeah, it's all prescriptive.
It's nothing written. It's just one of those where we have whatever has historically been used for safe travel.
But we don't own the dirt.
But we don't own it. There's nothing in writing.
So how do we, this is one of those places.
How do we do that?
Well, that's what's hard about this code is most roads in the county, we're going to have to apply this code because they're all substandard. Not only in width of asphalt and curb gutter, but also right.
This is the same thing we're doing, back to that, the Cherokee stuff, off of 3500 or whatever.
Exactly.
It's the same thing. We're going down the same path again.
Except there's a difference that they have access from the east.
Yeah.
We're not head in. There's no river.
I want to connect to your point earlier, Jim. You know, where all our access doesn't come out of here. I mean, with Charlie's kind of P D plan, you know, we have studs out here. We have studs for 1400. And we're also going to have access through here. So there'll be multiple ways to get there.
Is 4300 improved to where it needs to be, you know?
But we do have developers waiting on that.
So my quick, so we don't, we don't have enough dirt to put these improvements on.
Well, we, we have enough dirt to be able to do what we think is a proportionality, right, Gary, which was the seven, three and four feet of asphalt, seven feet of asphalt.
Yes.
Which is what we've asked.
But that pushes us very, very close to those ditches to where we literally have little to no shoulder at all. So there, there is a little bit of inherent risk in doing that. To do it right, if I'm being honest with you, to do it right, both sides of the road should be piped. So we don't have, the north side is worse. The north side has probably, Tucker, would you say?
Probably six, eight foot ditch.
Yeah.
That's a dangerous well. So when I was talking with Cortland, we think we have the easement to be able to pipe that, right?
Correct.
If we chose to do that, and then if we got pushed back, we'd end up in court and have to argue that we have the right for historic use. So we don't have the written time.
Yeah. The south side's more of a tailwater ditch off the field in question that's being irrigated there. And so it's not as deep of a drop off, but it is still a probably two foot deep ditch. It's enough that if a vehicle were to slide and lose control and the wheel gets in that, it's not going to be comfortable for the audience.
Commissioners, I think the engineers have actually erred interpretation of the ordinance really far in favor of the applicant. To the point that I, you know, we've sat down for quite some time to try and figure out what does the ordinance actually say? What the ordinance says, just the on space interpretation is, we should know what the cost estimate is to construct from the edge of his property all the way over to 4300, including the cost of buying right of way.
And with the. Including the right of way.
The cost of acquisition.
So that, so that the cost doesn't fall on existing taxpayers.
Is that included in the 230?
No, it's not. And so making that interpretation, we tried to err in favor of the applicant and say, look, let's just talk about hard surface and what we can improve. And so what the ordinance does allow Gary to do is gives him discretion to say, all right, we're not going to include the cost of acquiring right of way because we're not going out to force the acquisition of that right of way. So that remove that cost. And then you could say, we only want this much asphalt to be put down because that's all the amount of right of way that we have. So we don't have enough for curb gutter or sidewalk. And then the difference in that cost estimate of getting the curb gutter and sidewalk, and I would argue if we were to require the right of way cost, can be held in escrow. If I were the applicant, giving the applicant their argument against this, I would say you can only hold that for a few years. It's not fair to hold it indefinitely because then we're just holding money and not doing anything with it.
Yeah.
Our legal requirement, probably good by benefit needs to, is roughly proportionate and essentially related. And if we never use the money, we can never call that roughly proportionate.
I don't disagree with that.
And that's kind of where you get into the pioneering agreement side of things. So maybe we help them, help us, help him again.
Okay.
Gary, would this 200, does that include piping the ditch on either side?
So I don't believe it did.
That's just asphalt.
That's just asphalt surface.
No, well, this 200 is just.
And again, you know, we are going at 200 numbers based on us providing 86%, which is not, you know.
Only of that section though, Brad. Only of, only to that intersection, not of the whole street.
Right, but, but yeah, 86% of this where, you know, we're really closer to 40% of this. And so, you know, and, and we provided all of the, you know, all these concessions, all these additional roads to ensure that we're not all piping through that.
Well, you're, you have to provide those roads just because it's in subdivision code.
Right. So, so anyway, I'm just saying that in, in general, you know, if we're looking at fair proportionality.
Well, I guess to Brad's point, I guess the question needs to be, if I'm understanding it correctly, Brad, do we interpret the code as the way it's zoned currently, right now, or do we interpret it as what we know the zoning will more than likely change to in the future? Because we know that those six lots will multiply into whatever that subdivision that he zones to.
Ridley's Brad's.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's written, it's written.
That's assuming the school district sold the property. And there's a reason why they haven't sold it yet. And I don't know what that reason is.
The school district owns that.
They do.
That's the other factor in this. We don't actually know that's going to be developed.
And then if it doesn't.
Go on six acres, I can tell you that.
And if the school does develop it, we've seen how well that goes in working with them and getting what we need put in, which.
I'll keep my opinion.
Understood, Brad. I'm just, just kind of reminding everyone what we just went through.
We'd love to look at the school district to improve curb gutter and sidewalk if they do put a school in right here, but that is a direct cost on the taxpayers as well. And so you can't discount that side of the cost.
But the school district's not going to put a school on six acres. I can tell you that.
Is that only six acres there? I thought this was closer to.
I'm not sure.
You know, this is, Brad, yours is 20.
No, we have 14 acres.
Well, they got 14, so that could be.
Probably a little less than 14.
It could be. 10 or 12 possible. Could be an elementary.
It was going to be an elementary.
I want to support Brad on this. I like, I like Brad.
Really?
He's a great guy.
For the record, Commissioners, it's not that I don't like.
No, I get this. But I think if I'm going to go out there and buy this piece, chunk of property on 43 and 14, then I'm going to have to pay a higher percentage now for my little frontage. And I'm, let me finish, and I'm going to have to pay a big chunk for 4300. And that's disproportionate to this guy. Now, whether you buy the property or whether you currently own the property, uh, what I would like to do is have Brad, you go negotiate, buy that property, then you just have all that right there. Then it's all fair.
I have not had success thus far in negotiating buying property from the school district when they're not disposing. But, but.
They did it for a land. They did, all they did it is for a land swap, land bank.
Well, 14 acres could have future elementary, but look, I did the school district land for 15 years, so I know how they think.
But Jim, they're, they're at the intersection, so every developer, like, we're planning on improving curb gutter sidewalk, donating the right of way, everything for our frontage. So that's all they would be responsible for. They wouldn't have anything outside their own frontage.
Well, the way we got it planned right now, they would, they'd have the rest of the share. That's how this is, that's how the math works out.
But only on their frontage.
Just on their front.
Everyone has to be at frontage anyways.
Not if you take it when you take, and you took that to so many lots, if you make that an RE 15 and not commercial, it doesn't pencil out that way.
What do you mean?
That means that you've taken, you're taking these lot shares the way they are with this percentage down to 44. And you're presuming this is not going to go to, this is going to, it's going to go to RE 15 and those percentages. If it doesn't, and it does go to a school, then that all jacks up those numbers 100%. Those math numbers, 100%.
One more thing to complicate it, the general plan shows that property is being open space or school. And so if they came in and asked for an RE or R115, we would probably suggest not giving it to them.
Well, they don't, the school district doesn't have to ask.
That's correct.
That's true.
The school district to develop, they don't have to ask.
No, they could come in and slap a school on there next week.
Yeah, that's right.
And they wouldn't bother to come in and talk to us because they don't have to under state code.
That's right.
That's right.
So that throws your numbers off if that's the case. You're not going to have, you're not going to have 20 homes there. You're going to have, you know, 800 kids going there to elementary.
But would, would the school not improve their frontage? I mean, that's.
No, we can't, we can't.
Yeah.
They don't have to just have the safety routes to school.
They do, and they do have to improve their frontage. They don't have to do it to our standard.
That changes the whole.
They do what?
Area with the school there.
Yeah. Okay. But they wouldn't have to improve, would you say?
They would have to.
They would have to improve.
They don't have to.
They don't have to necessarily do your cross section, but they would have to improve it.
If they put a school there, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Ballows, where are you on this deal?
Well, I appreciate Jim articulating my first point, and that is 4300 and the access there and, and what that does to the numbers, but knowing now that it's a school or open space. Here's where I, here's where I am with the ordinance. And I stated this before a couple of weeks ago, if it's not written the way that we want it, then we need to rewrite it. It sounded like it was brand new. And Charlie, the way you describe it makes it sound like it was well thought out. We don't know what's going to go there. Well, now we do. It's going to be a school. But we don't know what's going to go there, which is why it was written the way it was written. And I hate the word discretion. I hate that because it puts it, it puts you or us in a position to have to do that. Now, if we want to use discretion on whether that includes just asphalt or, or piping or that, I can see that, but something that's spelled out in black and white, there should be no discretion there. That's my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. My, my position is this, that I wish the planning would have come forth and said, you know, when the planning. would have come forth and said, you know, when the planning commission, that's a requirement. Because I think it's, it's not fair for anybody to be told, hey, go ahead with your development, and we're gonna hit you later.
It was, it was disclosed, it was at the result.
That was disclosed.
Can I have one more thing?
We've had this discussion several times, and it wasn't until Gary talked to Courtland that things flipped on our heads.
Okay, go ahead.
One more thing, Charlie made this point, um, we can help with a payback agreement, and I like that idea. Now again, we're talking about a school and not homes, but in another instance, if there was gonna be homes here, we could help this developer with a payback agreement to help cover some of those costs that the pioneering developer bore. I like, I like that idea.
I don't know any other way to do it. That leaves the taxpayer free of the burden of having to pay up the cost.
So how do we do that in terms of what do we record, we have something in the planning, when some, so when somebody comes in and they wanna develop the school or put homes there, whatever the case may be, you've got X, you've gotta pay for upfront.
Yeah, and we made a reverse deferral agreement where we would.
It's a reverse deferral.
Yeah, if we have an agreement that says Brad already spent this much money on it, uh, we would probably even have it in there to inflate, uh, according to the cost of inflation and building material, so that if a developer or the school or whoever comes in and says, you know, this is how much you owe Brad back based on current costs.
Yeah.
I like that.
Well, I don't think we should be, I don't think it should be on their shoulders to pay for a future development.
Right.
Right.
Again, do we assign a timeframe to that reverse deferral agreement?
Five, ten years is usually what I see.
Which one?
Which one do you want?
Which one, he's gonna want five.
I would like your perpetuity.
He'd like, he wants.
Could we force a school to pay that?
No.
I doubt it, I think just be the portion that's not the school, right?
Brad's gonna come.
I don't wanna do that.
We couldn't force a school.
Right.
They won't pay that back.
Oh, crap.
It doesn't solve the right away issue either.
It doesn't.
Yeah, because, because right now, if we go down this road, we just pay you a lot of money, but you hold an escrow because
Right.
nobody's doing anything, we might, you know, put a little asphalt on it. And.
Now, we don't know when it comes to right away, whether or not we can have willing buyer, willing seller situation, I haven't asked.
Well, yeah, and once you start talking about, uh, that, you're getting into condemnation, you're talking about, you know how long it takes.
I'll see why.
So.
What, so the, the, one of the options that we came up with, that we thought we, we were okay with until we talked with Courtland, is we said, how about we just get the road, the roadway with asphalt with, to a good standard, twenty-six foot asphalt.
All the way to the intersection.
All the way to the intersection. So that's what kind of we come up with, and Brad, you think you're okay with that, should we put I think three foot of asphalt on one side and four on the other to get twenty-six foot of asphalt.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, well, originally, we talked about that, and when Gary and I talked, we said, okay, our proportionate share of that, because that's what's gonna happen.
What, what do you feel your proportionate share of that is?
I feel like forty-four percent.
Of that cost estimate.
Of that estimate.
So including your frontage that you have?
No. My frontage, yeah, we, I mean, we give you that cost estimate, I think it's forty thousand dollars, full improvement, full donation of the right away, plus.
But you have to donate the right of way out in front of your area and improve it regardless.
Right, so that's, that's done, but from there on, you know, that extra nine hundred feet, our proportion share of that, that asphalt improvement. Or whatever.
So it was about forty thousand?
No, forty thousand was our improvements, that, that right, the, hold on.
Um. Yeah, bottom one.
Yeah, that bottom one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
So you're saying, you, you're, you feel like your proportionate share is forty-four percent of a hundred and thirty thousand?
Right, that's what I came away from the last meeting with Gary before this, and, and that felt fair.
So I think when, when me and Gary thought, I thought, we don't have the impression that you're just gonna cover the whole cost to why not?
Correct, I didn't realize you were thinking proportionate share of that alone.
Oh, no, I see that, so I said, but, I, I mean.
What if they look proportionate share with the difference being held in escrow for five years? Um, that could, with an agreement that says you get that back if we can't.
What proportion share, forty-four or eighty?
The, the full amount, the full, whatever the number is.
Okay, right.
Yeah, where we hold that in escrow for five years, he gets it back at the end of five years, if we aren't successful spending the money on acquiring right away and potentially doing more.
Um, to that five years though, if I may speak to that for just a second, if, if we get into a situation where it's not a willing seller, I've seen right away contracts drag out for at least five years.
And I would say in those circumstances, if we don't have a willing seller, then that money goes back to Brad, because we don't have the ability to acquire.
Okay.
I just wanted that, no.
Say, yeah, if we can't provide the dirt for the surface, I don't think it's fair to hold money.
But I'd say give us five years if that's okay to try and negotiate with the landlord.
I don't mind the five years.
I mean, I, I do mind five years, I mean, and that's, you know, especially we're talking these numbers, um, but, um, would you be amenable to us just improving all of the asphalt?
Versus curb and gutter, sidewalk?
Right, those numbers come out to roughly, uh, not, not the eighty-six percent of everything, but roughly fifty percent of.
Well, we don't have any curb and gutter and sidewalk on that road there now.
No, we don't.
At all.
That's hardly what makes it substandard.
Yes.
We don't have it.
I think along with the asphalt, that piping becomes a critical issue.
Most people who live on roads without a sidewalk.
That's me, sorry.
Most of them don't live on paved roads, so, you know.
They don't like.
I, we, we. Why, why would we put in, I mean, ob- obviously in front of your development, we need, you need curb gutter and sidewalk.
Right.
That's right. But I'm not convinced that curb gutter and sidewalk should go all the way down and require that right now, now whether there has to be some type of escrow for that.
We're, we're, we think the same thing, because we don't have the right of way.
Yeah, correct.
But.
We can't put it in.
I guess what we're saying is we think Brad should do that seven feet of asphalt all the way down, and that whatever that is, a hundred and thirty, we think that's his proportionate share.
Yeah, with, yeah, the way, the way the code's written, definitely that'll be under his.
Yeah, I, so, we do, require him to do seven foot of asphalt all the way down, curb and gutter sidewalk in front of his development. We wait five year requirement on curb and gutter and sidewalk based upon us ac- acquiring the easements in the future.
Wait, wait, so you're saying we improve it plus we put money in? Both?
Yeah.
To be held.
Okay.
I think I know what you're saying, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And is that?
But with the, with the payback provision.
Well, if I'm, if I'm paying.
Correct, it is, yes.
Anyways, why am I paying and installing? I guess the only difference.
Well, we're, you're not, you're not be required to do curb gutter and sidewalk, anything other than your, the way I view it.
Right.
Because the ordinance says that you install, right, that's why. That you install the extension of that to forty-three hundred, am I right?
As far as, as far as we determine it to be proportionate.
Proportionate share.
Right.
And that's kind of the, that's probably, I think, the bigger dispute that Brad keeps coming back to, because you keep highlighting about fifty percent share versus.
And, and Courtland, I'm curious, what's your take on proportionate, reasonable proportionality? Like, when I talk to my attorney, he's like, oh, that's obvious, clear case, Don versus Tiggerd, that's not proportional to have us, you know, required seventy pers- eighty-six percent. Do you see that differently?
I, excuse me, I do, I see the only real non speculative way we can put this in our ordinance right now is the way we wrote it, because anything else is pure speculation about what zoning changes are gonna happen.
Yeah.
We've got it written so that we're looking at the math right now, as far as what is there, what's possible right now.
Hmm.
If there is rezoning in the future that changes that, that's where these pioneering agreements can come in. But otherwise, I mean, if we were to do that in your case, we'd have to do that potentially in every case, and our ordinance would be meaningless, because we're looking at possibilities that people may want to come in and apply for, that the county commission has legislative authority to grant or deny, as far as reasons are concerned. Someone may come in and ask for a zone that would provide more density, and we may think that's going to happen, but the county commission might deny that. And so there's really, um, not as far as I can come up with, and when we went through this process, a better way to calculate the proportion.
I, I know the calculation.
Right.
The calculation I know is, is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
But do you think that's reasonable proportionality?
I do actually, because, because of the existing zoning and development potential right now, and particularly in this case, we're looking at property on the corner where a large portion of that is a single parcel that fronts on two roads, and the bigger part of that frontage is on the other road, so it is to say there's even going to be an access off of fourteen hundred into that parcel if if the school district even develops.
If the school, and I feel like we're being penalized for, because it's the school district and you've had beef with the school district. Because any, any other development, that gets, that gets done regardless, you know, and, and so now because us here at this table are worried that the school district will not, you know, improve it how we want it, we're getting penalized for that.
That's not what it's about, for me, it's about.
It reflects current reality.
As opposed to.
Right.
The ordinance doesn't talk about the school district at all, it just talks about.
No, but I, but, until we brought up the school district, everybody was kind of, well, that makes sense.
That's kind of, that's kind of a side, a side detail, I think the interpretation comes down to, like Courtland explained, the way the ordinance is now, and the way the land is zoned now. Time of, time of development, time of whatever we decide to do today, not what it could be, because there's really a million and one different ways you could, you could try to change zoning in the future. I realize the general plan kind of takes us down one direction, but if this was a different location, you, you have, really have no way of predicting what that zoning change could fit to, right? So we have to go off what it is today, right now, and, and it is what, it's basically one lot.
And I will acknowledge that, yes, like we've talked about before, there is certainly the possibility that someone twenty years from now comes in and benefits from what your development has done, and maybe they don't end up having to pay for it because a pioneering agreement expired, but at the same time, this probably is a really small, like, counter argument, I guess, I mean, that's the wrong word, but your development's gonna benefit this, you're gonna be, if that happens, your development's gonna be the only ones that benefit from any of these improvements for twenty years, and so why shouldn't your development be the ones to pay for that? Um, if you're the only ones benefiting from it, and so from the improvements, from the nature of the improvements, I mean, that it wouldn't be fair to ask anybody else to pay for that benefit and only your development's getting for those twenty years.
To advance that just a little bit further, um, there's a reason why it costs so much money to develop on the frontier, I mean, you there's a reason why land that is previously undeveloped sells for less. If I were to buy a piece of property on a fully improved road, you could expect that I might be expected to pay more for that.
Yeah, no.
That's a good point.
You're exactly right, that's true, okay, we're getting short of time here, in fact, we're past time, so, uh, what do you wanna do with this, Gary? First off, we gotta change it where we make the decisions, not Gary.
I would love that, okay?
Take that, what we need to do there, Courtland, let's make that change.
We're working on other subdivision changes, so we'll make sure we get that in there.
Okay.
But right now it's Gary's decision.
Is that what, is that what it comes down to?
The, the word.
Wait, you're gonna say, let's turn it back to him?
No, I want him recommended, right, we have to make the old judge's decision.
The word discretion, there's specific times in this ordinance, it doesn't give him discretion to do anything he wants, it's very specific, that's what he has discretion for.
It's his decision, but his job, so I'm one of those that worry.
Nah, so, here, here's why we brought this to you guys initially.
Okay.
You're all aware of everything that's been going on everywhere in the county. Lesson, biggest lesson I've taken away from all this, follow the ordinance the way it's written, okay? Don't, don't veer away from it, don't make special exceptions, don't, don't change. That's why when I met with Brad, I went to Portland to make sure my interpretation of the ordinance was correct. I found out I was incorrect, and that's okay, I'm not perfect, I'm not gonna claim to ever be the smartest guy in the world. But what I, but what I did do as a result is I called Brad and I said, oh crap, I screwed up. Um, are you sitting down, you're not gonna like this, this is what it's interpreted as. Brad obviously didn't like it, I said, if you wanna try to plead the, the different case to the commissioners, that's entirely your ability. But according to the ordinance, my recommendation would be following the spreadsheet on page two. And, and that, that does put a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar, which honestly, I'm wondering if, if we need to revise the way it's split, because the way the zoning reads today, there's not capability of six lots in that potential school property, is there?
It is, because the zoning will allow.
Okay, okay, so, so we would keep it the way the, the way it's proportionally split, and that would.
So currently, yeah, current zone, six lots.
Yeah, okay, so, so off of that zoning, my recommendation would be exactly the numbers in front of you there, okay?
If we were to go to court and talk about rough proportionality, which in most cases, most jurisdictions that I'm aware of don't write down a formula in their code on what rough proportionality is. And the reason for that is because every property is different.
Right.
If we were to go to court on rough proportionality, we would argue to the judge that not only did we do a hundred percent of the cost uh, proportionality, we went under that, hundred percent minus what the zone could otherwise produce. Um, and so like Courtland was saying, we don't have any level of predictability of whether or not the zone will produce anything, but we're still not asking Brad to compensate that, or let him deliver.
Okay, so in your mind, Gary, what do we get out of this, seven feet of asphalt?
Well, honestly, if we go off this page two, we get a check from Brad, and then, uh, that money is in escrow to, to.
Then we can use it.
We, we can use it to, to try to, we can start approaching the property owners, purchase the property, and then build these improvements listed.
We need to do that anyway. But we're not charging him for acquisition cost.
No, sir, no, there, there is zero right away acquisition cost involved in this, this number.
Our deal was five, four, five years ago, we were gonna, all these substandard roads, we were gonna start chipping away at these and getting these, getting the right away and all of them, so we don't have to deal with these things in the future, so this is just, that speaks, that resonates with what we agreed on back then with me, so I'm, so where are you?
I'm with his recommendation.
Okay, and I assume you're the same place?
Absolutely.
So the only thing I wanna make sure that we put in there is a provision if, if that, uh, money ends up being spent, that we have some type of payback provision for future development
Yep.
to the, to the sale.
Of course, of course.
Go back to, yeah, go back, so, go back to Brad, it goes back to Brad.
Of course.
How many years do you want that to be?
Well, I think.
He said into perpetuity, but now I think he changed his tune to my thing and said five.
I don't.
No, no, he's still perpetuity.
You don't do the improvements within five years.
That was a different five years.
But I, I'd already got past that.
I think we were just. All right, ten years?
So ten year pioneering agreement?
Yeah.
Future property owners?
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think so.
And so each law that depends.
Don't have to worry about five years, so don't say what that means, I'm looking.
He said five.
So we.
All right. You, I'm, you good there? So.
No, but.
He's not there.
No, but.
Can we clarify, just to make sure we know?
Yeah.
We're gonna hold the money for five years, if we haven't been able to spend the money, or whatever amount of that money we haven't been able to spend on acquiring right away and, and improvements, would go back to Brad.
I agree.
It, the amount of money that we do spend out of that escrow, we will for ten years require anyone who benefits from it to pay Brad, Brad back.
I totally understand, okay.
But is that only if it's in excess of the six lots or whatever that small percentage is?
I would say anyone who's developing that.
But what we're saying is any, if we can't put the improvements in that we're requiring to be put in within ten years, that money goes back. Or within five years, ten years, somebody comes in, they pay back.
They pay back.
Of what we spent, yeah.
What we spent.
Their proportionate share, right?
Yeah, correct, okay, yes, correct, yes.
Okay, I think, I just think we need to make sure, you know, these substandard roads, fourteen hundred, when the next development proposal comes forth, that that, you know, each must be addressed, and we clear this up beforehand, so the developer knows exactly what they're getting into.
Understood.
Because that becomes part of their entire package when they make an offer on.
I, I will say, that was talked about in the planning commission, like Charlie mentioned, they actually said, no, we want that condition, we wanna figure out what Brad's cost is gonna be right now.
For the reason.
Rezone.
We discouraged them from doing that, because we didn't want them laypeople, especially without Gary there in the room, uh, helping do that calculation.
Well, I think it's a, yeah, I think it's critical for both them and us to know what those numbers are.
And, and to be honest, I, I think they could have figured out those numbers well before we had this conversation, and, and while they were rezoning the property.
And, and to be honest, I, I think they could have figured out those numbers well before we had this conversation and, and while they were rezoning the property.
Okay, well, and you're, and I don't disagree with that. Yeah.
It's a, it's a little bit of, it's the first one, right? Cutting our teeth, cutting Brad's teeth, certainly, maybe.
But I know Brad's no stranger, Brad's no stranger to being on the cutting edge. No, we did that, we did that out to the other thing too. You were well ahead of the others. This is not, this is what he does for, this is what you do. You're way out ahead of everybody else and it, that's part of the risk, I guess, you know? But I respect you for that. You can see what's coming and, and good for you. I, I think this, from when I've been here, uh, you've been treated pretty fairly, you know, on, on how things have moved. But it's all cutting edged up, Brad. It's all cutting everywhere you've done. It's like that. So, but I respect him huge as a person too, Brad, always been, but I would do the same thing as you. Are you still going to be friends? I hope so.
We want Brad to pick up the other properties to the east as well.
Yeah, I'd just, I'd incentivize him to go buy some additional dirt, so. All right, I think that's where we are. Gary, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
That works. Thanks for your time, listeners.
Thank you.
Sorry I was late.
Thanks, Bradley. You're running twenty-five minutes behind.
Charlie. Are you around for the next meeting?
Rick, Charlie. Don't you guys go anywhere?
Well, Scott. Leave my water on.
I'd almost rather back.
I'm running over here. Yeah, Scott, right here. I got a special. Hey, what was your prize yesterday?
It was like a, a little mug and I was battery heating Ellen. Oh, wow. Get me through those long cold nights.
It's an interesting game.
You guys, I think have a lot more conversations than I'm involved in, I think. Outliers perspective, that's the only engagement I had. It really seemed like they were basically saying, you know what we want to do. I've seen that from some of these smaller districts though. I guess they forget that they're actually. Well, it's, it's interesting when you're selling one of those projects and proposals are made from now and it's a high degree of, I'd be a big. That's not basically like, you know, like get the data, like maybe the data substantiates what we build, but until we substantiate it.
Yes.
Yeah, I laughed, right? Or, well, it sounds like.
It was fun. I didn't, I didn't, I don't know what I really wanted, so.
There you go. Now you're good. Now you come back.
This is a four minute presentation.
I think so. All right, we're ready to go?
Sorry, guys.
Looks like we're still cooking on the site, so it's one, actually this is one thirty, we're thirty minutes late. Which is discussion regarding landscaping ordinance amendments for Weber Basin incentives. Steve Burton, Red Grover, Charlie. Gary's Liam, and of course we have Mr. Patton from Weber Basin, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So who's going to start this?
Sure. The commissioners have given us some direction, um, earlier this year to get, um, an ordinance adopted, uh, or written, I should say. Um, that adopts the Weber Basin landscaping incentive requirements. So that folks in the unincorporated areas can take advantage of those incentives. And that's, that's what we've done. We brought it to the planning commission, both Western Weber, we took it to Western Weber in July, we also took it to Ogden Valley in July. Um, Rick asked me to, before putting this on a regular work session, Rick asked me to set this up and do invite. Um, Scott Paxman and John Perry, thanks for being here, um, to see, just in case you guys had any questions specifically for them. Uh, a few weeks ago, I met with John and went over this ordinance and, um, John confirmed that this would meet the requirements for Weber Basin for those incentives. Now, one thing I do want to mention is the Western Weber Planning Commission gave you a thumbs up, the ordinance as written in front of you. The Ogden Valley Planning Commission, um, going to give you their very specific findings, because I know they like me to do that, so. The Ogden Valley Planning Commission recommended denial of the text amendment and stated the following in their motion as findings. That it was not consistent with the general plan, it was not in the best interest of the general public. They did give a finding that they said, we would like to see the program benefits apply to the valley without the restrictions. They had some concern with, they wanted to make sure that their open spaces were still green, which I think they still would be, but they wanted, they, they said.
That was actually a weird concern.
Getting rid of turf grass meant eliminating open space, and that's why they said general plan. They also had some concern with, um. Heat island effect by taking out grass in the park strips and requiring it to all be rock.
We don't have a lot of park strips in the valley, but.
No, so.
Uh, one of the things I talked to John about was, hey, can we still get the benefit? Can folks out west get the benefit if the folks now don't want?
Can we, can we split the county too, which?
It sounds like we can. Is that right? There's two different planning.
Yeah, there's two different planning groups and it's the same thing we've done up in Summit County where they've got a similar situation. So as long as we have a, a defined boundary.
Which you're with.
Would be applicable or not, I think we can work with.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm prepared to go into the specifics if you want, but.
So did we need to change the ordinance to do that?
We do. So they have got some restrictions. Um, if you look at the, I'll just show you the last page of this paper I gave.
Give us the last, give us the.
I wonder if these sentences take effect. This is, uh, this is what needs to be applied. Uh, we, we've proposed a chapter that's called water wise landscaping and we've said.
Yeah.
Uh, just so you know, the text in front of you, I have implemented the suggestions of Ogden Valley, so I specifically say Western Weber. So the following water wise landscaping standards apply to all new development in the Western Weber.
Yeah.
Um, in a single family, in single family residential developments, no more than thirty-five percent of the front and side yard of the water parcel. I think that, that is just the Weber Basin, no more than thirty-five percent can be lawn. We've actually said irrigated turf grass in case there was any question about what lawn is. But we also say, uh, or no more than three thousand square feet of the entire lot or parcel, whichever is greater. They can pick whatever, somebody out west in a new development can pick whatever gives them more landscaping. Right? The second one, B, in commercial and that's purely institutional and multifamily developments, no more than fifteen percent of the total lot. Landscape area, maybe irrigated turf grass. Um, this provision shall not apply to recreation areas, um, that meet the standards of Weber Basin, so like parks and things like that, obviously. Will need to have some lawn. And then C, um. Irrigated turf grass in a park strip and any other yard area with a width less than eight feet is prohibited. Um, that would be for all new single family and, and actually any type of development out west, we would say your, your park strip cannot contain grass.
Okay. All right.
Great.
Scott, any issues?
Not that I can think of, I think that meets what we wanted them to hear. I mean, and it is not, it started out to be our. Ordinance, but it quickly became the state's requirements, so. We, because we had some leniency or some, some flexibility, I should say, uh, when we were just doing the park strip, that's kind of. Inversion, but, but now that it is a standard program, we don't have any, it's needed or, or not. But yeah, I think.
So it's kind of gone, gone from your oversight to the state, is what I understand.
It has, yes.
Okay.
It's kind of interesting because the state doesn't allow us to take any kind of escrow or anything like that for private landscaping improvements for single family.
Right, yeah.
But.
Yeah.
So we don't have a way to enforce it except for maybe driving around a little bit.
No, yeah.
That's then everybody's concern is kind of the enforcement of that. Just what you can do.
I guarantee you the state's not going to send.
Hopefully the meter is going to be able to enforce.
Well, absolutely, it will be. And, and if it wasn't for the money that they're contributing, um, we'd probably, we'd be going this route, but, but they're. They're meeting.
So this is coming out of state's pocket.
Coming out of the state, half of it from us.
Oh, half, okay.
So they're matching. These incentive programs, currently they go until twenty twenty-four, is that right?
Well, so the way it's structured right now is they had a one-time appropriation of like five million, but then they've got ongoing right now of three million every year. So unless they change legislation, they'll have three million in there statewide.
And this would be, um, the, the flip your straight incentive and also the lawn, I don't know how you, what you call it, lawn conversion, taking out grass.
What's a lawn? Taking out grass?
Yep, taking out area in your lawn extends to the entire yard. You can, you can take out sections of your yard and get reimbursed for that or.
What do you, what's the reimbursement?
It's.
Two fifty.
How difficult is that to get reimbursed?
It's just a little process.
Come on, I know, I know how the state works. It's just a year, two years.
So this is not the state's, the, the reimbursement will be through us.
Oh, the year, so.
And then they're just, they're just back beating.
They're backing the dollar.
Yeah, so we'll have to make our request.
So it actually can go pretty quick, but it, but it takes time for the homeowner to get it all figured out and.
Right.
Whether they're doing it themselves or getting a contractor on board, it takes a little bit of time, so. Within, you know, within a few months or up to a year.
Typically after we get notification of the project being completed, we can have the final inspection done within a week. And then it's probably another two or three weeks after that that the reimbursement is cut and sent out.
So do you go out and make the initial inspection and then the final inspection?
Yep, so the applicant will engage directly with the district. The district's the one administering the program, so we do a. A pre-virtual site visit where basically just via FaceTime or Zoom, we meet with them, they kind of show us what's going on, we answer any questions they may have. It's like a ten, fifteen minute process. Once they've done that and they signed the, the participation agreement and gotten that information back to us. Along with the W nine, we don't like the W nine anymore than anybody else, but if you're going to get an incentive more than five ninety-nine. It is taxable income, so we get all those documents and that pre-site visit done. At that point, they get permission to move forward with their project and they've got twelve months to complete it, and that's another state requirement, just to make sure we don't have these things going out there.
Who's hanging out there forever.
Um, and then the only time they hear from us again is once they come back onto the, the Utah Water Savers or similar platform and say, hey, we're done. We send somebody out, we take final measurements, make sure the irrigation system's set up like it needs to be, the landscaping requirements are met. And then, uh, I don't know, check.
Good, okay. Sounds easy.
You guys care about ponds?
Yeah.
Or the existence of them?
Yes.
Through this program, I should ask, without water rights?
Well, so, so I.
They're paying for a friend.
We, we, we wouldn't reimburse for replacement of turf grass in Lisper Pond.
Yeah.
We're paying, so this, this is not cheap water we're developing here. It's around fifteen thousand dollars an acre foot.
Uh, it was around fifteen thousand dollars an acre foot at the dollar twenty-five, to a two fifty, we're probably thirty, forty thousand, yeah.
Really?
For acre foot.
Anticipated savings.
Well, so this is, it's a water supply issue, but it's, it's more of a public education. Uh, yeah, we're in trouble here. We need to start conserving.
What are you selling, what are you selling acre feet for now?
So annually.
Thirty thousand?
No.
No.
It's about six hundred, seven hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then just one clarification to something you said, so we've, we, when we started this effort, we did have a, just a flip your strip, so a specific to the park strip area. With this program, it's, it's your yard, front yard, backyard, side yard, park strip. And it's two fifty rather than dollar twenty-five that the district was doing on our own, so if you adopted this. We would make this area, area eligible just for the landscape lawn exchange. They don't miss out on anything, they actually get more money through the state incentive. And it's open to the entirety of their yard. And we'll be sunsetting the flip your strip program because we don't want to be administering two different programs.
Okay, well, it's just unfortunate. There, there are people in the valley that would like to take advantage of that, to take some grass out, but. Yeah, it is what it is.
And I guess just. One more, if you get out and gather a conversation with Ogden Valley, we're not restricting vegetation in a park strip. Like it's the overhead spray turf grass that we're restricting, so there's still opportunities to put ground covers that utilize drip irrigation, shrubs, trees. We want all of that stuff because we agree that we want to mitigate heat island effect. I guess the argument we're making is that we can't mitigate it in its entirety just by using water that doesn't exist.
Right, yeah.
I appreciate that. I think we did a okay job letting them know that. I think they're, they want water to grass, so, but. It might be worth going back and double checking, so.
It might be worth talking, I don't know, probably not.
If we can help, let us know, but I, I believe you guys did a good job explaining it, so.
Thanks.
Good, anything else, Steve?
No, unless you have something for us, we'll, we'll look at it on your agenda.
Hey, Steve, I emailed you earlier about, um, unincorporating you in Highlands, that belongs to the Western.
Yeah, so the only thing we're excluding is Ogden Valley.
Okay.
Well, I was going to take all my grass out too.
I think I'm going to.
You can still do it. I mean, we encourage you to.
It's not retroactive.
I'm going to gates, but I'm going to get paid for it.
Let me add this up, okay. I have to turn into a vice master, I guess. All right, Scott, anything else? All right, thanks, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Good seeing you.
Absolutely. See you all.
Come back anytime.
Okay.
I hear you got a little truth of taxation here that's coming out.
We've done it.
Oh, you've done it?
Last week.
How did you go?
We had four people.
That is a great turn.
That's a great turnout.
Really? Yeah, you dodged a bullet there.
Yes, you did.
I bet we'll be lucky.
We'll be lucky.
Did you say that you got today?
Months ago. Because I'm actually responding to him right now and I wanted to double check.
That's my fear. I'm going to slide down. Just trade you.
Harvey, you coming back? Welcome back.
Yes.
Long time no see.
It wasn't very long, it wasn't. Yes, so Wendy's been talking to Steve for two days. It's all gone to an online event.
All right, let's keep moving here. Harvey will be back. This is our two P M discussion regarding the G S E C Golden Spike Event Center. It's Marty, Jennifer, Duncan, Todd. Portman, Stephanie Russell's not here.
We kind of need Corlin, he's a critical piece of this.
What's that?
We need Corlin, he's a critical piece of this.
This is, we need him before we start.
Well.
Do you know, do you know about the lease? Has he talked to you? Bartlin's on his way up.
Okay.
So do you want to wait or do you want to kind of give the?
Well, I, I can give an intro if he's on his way up.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I'll just read his verbiage here.
Um, did you need to list Jill for the minutes as well?
Yeah, Jill, sorry about that. Jill, tell us, some, some may not know what your position is, tell us.
I'm Jill and I'm accounting for Culture Parks and Act.
Yeah, accounting.
Lead accountant.
Yeah, okay. Great. All right, good, thank, I think we got everybody else. Todd, did we introduce you? Nobody knows you.
You did.
Okay, good. I miss you.
I'm hiding over here with the grubs.
I'm hiding over here with the grabs.
Okay, Marty, give us the intro.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Portland, you got Portland, good. Portland just showed up for those on Zoom.
We we uh. Went to the recorder's office and the clerk auditor's office to try to chase down a lease with Ogden City for the fairgrounds. Because we, none of us seem to have one on record.
This is on the dirt.
On the, all of the fairgrounds, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
The property where the, all the infrastructure.
All the infrastructure is.
Okay.
Um we, they actually did find a signed lease. Um and I think Courtland feels like, I won't speak for him, that the language. Isn't our favor, so I'll just default to Courtland right now on what we think the lease says. That is actually signed by Ogden City and recorded.
Okay.
The renewal portion of it.
So we, we, we have a signed lease. By Ogden City.
With renewal language in the lease.
Okay, all right, good.
Yes, it, in my opinion, it does allow the county the option to renew that says. At the expiration of the term of this ground lease, the county shall have the option to renew this ground lease on the same terms and conditions. As are set forth herein for an additional term of not to exceed fifty years. And then it goes on to say some other stuff, but uh that is pretty clear language. So we have the option to renew on the same terms for up to fifty more years.
Okay, so when does our current lease expire?
Six, seventeen years.
Seventeen years.
Twenty thirty seven, I believe. This was from nineteen eighty.
Realistically, we got seventy seven plus or minus years. Or sixty seven, excuse me, yeah, okay. All right.
Well, fourteen more years, so sixty four years.
Sixty, okay, fourteen more years.
Court, Courtland, you did mention in your email to me that it was not clear if we had to wait. Till the final year of this term lease before we can renew or not.
Right, because it says at the expiration of the term of this ground lease, the county shall have the option to renew. So they. Could argue we have to wait until it's about to expire, but we can give them notice anytime and it doesn't hurt us for any reason to give them the notice. And that way we've covered that.
It probably doesn't hurt, yeah, it's not that, it's not to say we can't give them notice prior to a certain day.
I'd say we could do it anytime.
Via what, certified letter or?
You think? It doesn't say, and so when I looked into that, I. I figured we would probably want to do some kind of a letter. Um you might want to pass a resolution if you want to make it formal approving a letter to be sent to Ogden City renewing the lease.
Probably so. And it becomes record.
Yeah.
What year was the check sent to them? You renewed it a little while ago.
It was two thousand sixteen. I have a copy of that.
Thousand sixteen.
Yeah, I have a copy of the check, check number, has all the information on what date it cleared the bank, etc.
This strengthens our position.
Yes, okay, that's the payment for the next fifty years.
Right.
So she did that knowing that this could be a problem.
Right, which we felt probably wasn't binding in its, in of itself, but.
Right.
And we talked about that because if somebody at Ogden City received that in a clerk's office somewhere or something and. Who knows what they did with it? Did they ever really get notice? I don't know, we could probably argue it, but why not make it official? And just let them know.
I think we should do a resolution and send this.
Well, we probably ought to let Ogden City know we're planning on letting them do that before we do the resolution.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Because the last time we did the resolution on that property out west. It tipped them over a little bit, at least a lot of chatter behind the scenes.
Yeah.
Very offensive to them.
Well, they're not that likely, no matter what.
Not that it, they do that stuff to us, but we should be, we should act the way that we should be about.
Yeah. Well, you've got an opportunity for that with a new changing administration, so probably be a perfect opportunity to have that discussion.
We still could lose the West law, though, right? Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, we have no.
We have nothing there.
Agreement does not uh deal with the West law. It only deals with same area. That's covered by the interlocal agreement to develop.
Is the strip for the RV park in, wasn't that incorporated in with this lease, though?
It was incorporated into the initial uh inter, inter. What am I trying to say? Interlocal agreement. That's what was amended.
The initial interlocal.
The the interlocal agreement was amended to add that parcel.
To the lease, not?
To. To the interlocal agreement. I don't know that it was added to the lease because I don't think anybody really knew about the lease. The lease is mentioned in the interlocal agreement. I think it was one of those things that was thought that was just never followed up on.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But it was actually done and recorded.
So basically our parking lot to the west, we have no, has no impact on that. We don't have any.
All we can do is continue to, yeah, fight Congress and make sure, not fight them, but make sure that that recreational component language stays on there.
Correct, yeah. Okay. All right, so what are you looking for from us?
Well, I guess we would look for guidance and. Uh once the resolution is passed, you know, who initiates the letter, who's going to send that? And get that done. I I would assume Courtland, is that probably the best route to go?
Yeah, just, I guess, yeah, exactly what you said. Let us know who you would like to prepare the letter and sign it, which probably would be the. County Commission Chair.
So do we want, do we need to do that before we change administrations or should we wait till? The new folks come in?
Uh uh the city.
The city, yeah. Yeah.
Well. Yeah, because even the uh the chief administrator officer could change.
Could very well. Um I mean, I don't think it hurts us to give. To give notice prior to, I just want to, I don't, from a legal standpoint, I mean, it probably doesn't make a lot of difference.
That's not a legal. Significant, I have nothing significant legally about that. You can do it now, you can do it a year from now, you can do it ten years from now, either way.
Okay. Harvey, so in your portfolio, what do you want to do? Do it now or wait?
Even I'm actually thinking about that. I'm thinking about the relationship piece of this. If we did it now, whenever we do it, we'll strike that. Whenever we do it, we should meet with the chief administrative officer. The mayor and Gary Williams. Have some just kind of a powwow and just say, this is what we're planning on doing. Maybe have Courtland prepare that letter. I don't know when we'll put that forward, but then just say, this is, and this is the language we're going to use. Then they're going to start talking and put heat, more heat back on the fifty acres or the twenty, whatever acres it is out there. It's gonna, this will just, there could be some unintended consequences. But that doesn't matter which administration I think is in there. But the action of of doing a uh. Doing what you suggested will cause, I think, very well will cause a something. Now that, which now it says, you know, I'm trying to work out something with those guys right now where we. Keep a strip of property on the west side of the riding, you know, on the west side of that road for just for RV parks only. And do something there and uh. But that would necessitate us if that were the case, then with this new plan, if if we lose all that parking there. Start tearing out the track and start tearing out the cross-country field. Because that's the only other place that we're going to have enough parking for the people who come for the ropings and the barrel races and everything else like that. There's, there's not enough. Right?
Right, well, that was part of the, the second part of, I think, this meeting was a little bit of direction in. How we wanted to go along with the change order for the feasibility study. Um you know, they've got us this great plan, but that plan, you know, does have that piece that you're talking about and it's not. The West law is still in play. And so that I.
Yeah, just to get everyone to speed, we uh got sort of a final report from the. The group that's doing the feasibility study. And it basically said you can do everything, you should do everything. And we we basically said you got to go back. Because you need to tell us what we should be doing based on what the county is going to look like in twenty to thirty years. So go back. And fix what you gave us and to Duncan's point and Commissioner's point. Uh something will have to be torn out and changed, uh whether it's rec. You know, we we have big decisions to make, which we all know. What what are we going to keep and what are we going to lose?
Yeah.
Especially when we lose parking.
Well, we know we're going to lose the parking, just a matter of time.
And I think we should probably plan on losing all the parking, do you think?
I I don't disagree.
I think if we end up with some, it'll be a way, I, yeah, but I think the plan is to lose all of it. If we end up with some, happy day.
Which immediately changes the plan that Victus brought us because the plan they brought us did have trailer parking in the west.
On that west sider.
Mm-hmm. On about one third of the current dirt lot, there is what we were.
If we get any parking, it'll be about a hundred fifty feet. I don't think we can depend on that.
But they, they basically said, uh you should put in some turf soccer fields, you should build a eight-court rec building, you should. You know, and we're basically.
We're not going to turn it, you know. Well, that's great, where we get the money.
We're, yeah, we.
Well, we didn't tell them we agreed.
You know. I mean, you know, there is money in sports, but everybody else is also doing sports. So there's a lot to talk about.
Right, but with, without that dirt parking to the west of the riding arena. That that changes become much more expensive because. There's a possibility we have to knock down some actual buildings and move things.
I had to have a direct, I had to have a direct conversation with Gary Williams over there. Chris, I want you to hear this loud and clear. But I pulled up the map and I said, you can't, he just said, you guys have the space if you just close your soccer fields. And your softball fields to put your parking out there. And I says, that's great, Gary, but where do I put the horse? This is all horse park. They thought it was only for the fair, I says, no. Every week, where do I put the horse? I can't walk the horse through the courtyard.
Right, that's what I'm, and that's.
That's the problem. I says, you people down, I said, you people.
Your people, yeah.
You people downtown don't have any clue, just like I didn't have any clue when I was sitting out there. Wearing wool every day. You can't. Bring a horse all the way across the courtyard into the, you have to have it right there.
Yeah.
And so the other problem, the other speed, what little I know about horses. The other problem is is the horse is going to want to go to home the direction he came in. So it's going to change the attitude of the horse. When they run a barrel pattern or when they team roll, because they're all going to want to head west to that gate. Right now, it works. Because the the way that horses run patterns all work, but it's all going to change. It's going to be. Whatever we do, if we end up having to take off that tail of the racetrack for more parking back in the back, whatever we do back there. Will change. To how our operation runs because the horses will not perform like they do today.
To Jen's point, if parking goes back there, some buildings will have to move or change.
Stadium maybe comes down or the, you know, it's the whole deal, right?
It becomes a much, much more expensive. Process.
We, we've been holding off on a lot of capital needs because, you know, waiting to come to a decision. So we don't dump uh funds into something that we're going to tear down or change or move. But. Once the study is done, uh. Hat, knowing that we don't know when the parking will go away, I guess as collectively we'll have to come to a decision, are we just going to leap in and go ahead and make the changes? Or. Or just wait and start fixing things as we go along? And just wait until, tho- those will be the big decisions we have to make.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, I guess for a dollar amount, maybe we could get behind them taking over the west parking lot.
Well. Uh. Yeah, there, there, there is, and so, uh, you know, we're a little early here. Well, I'll just state the fact, you know, one day I'm hoping that. Boyer will see it, or no, not Boyer, Ogden City would see an incentive to buy out our lease. Now with that, but lease buyout, they also have, you know, let, let, let me move to. Uh further on this. If if they were to, the most expensive part, B D O were to expand, and first I, I don't want to see a fairgrounds go away. I think the citizens of Weeber County have paid for fairgrounds and by gosh, they deserve one. Well, it's aged and it's old and it needs to be fixed up. Okay, fine. But if B D O wants to expand and Ogden City wants that to expand in the name of. Uh best use, you know, highest and best use, then they need to provide us a place and build us a fairgrounds somewhere that. It's new so that not on the taxpayer of, not on the taxpayer Weaver County. And so uh. The, the issue is, is all the property that's out there, that fairgrounds is far about a hundred forty, hundred fifty acres. Half of it's Weaver County owned, half of it is Ogden City owned. The problem is, is half of it that's owned by Ogden City all has buildings on it. That's two, two, two problems. One, buildings are on it, so we got all that infrastructure and all those assets on there. But two, if they were to ever develop it, if they end up scraping it all and putting those concrete tilled up buildings, the demolition of that's going to be huge. Yeah. On the price, piece of property we own. Is all pretty much, there's no buildings for the time.
There's the U S U building, the animal services and the ball conflict.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe animal services still stays there, however that works, you know, I don't, so. Uh there's a lot to, there's a lot, there's some numbers on how, what is highest and best use look like. We're not quite there to talk about that today. I I still think, though, we likely should exercise that. This, this notice, uh this, what did you call it, Courtland?
Uh the resol- resolution.
Resolution with the letter.
A resolution with the letter. That's probably, we should probably get started on that.
I agree. I don't see, there's no reason to wait.
Yeah, and at least now we know we have it for sixty four more years. So Ogden City is going to have to wait. Sixty four more years instead of fourteen.
Right, and so that makes it so to buy out our lease would be very expensive for them to do it. At what point do we use that money or may they, maybe they're, maybe they got a lot of cash right now and they can afford to. Buy some land and start building us some buildings somewhere else and then, you know, I don't know. But I'm not going to be bullied by Ogden City, that's for sure.
Well, I, I think we go ahead, let's do the. Reso, let's do the letter regarding the lease and we'll do a resolution. We'll set up a meeting with the mayor, city manager and Gary Williams.
Yeah.
The next thirty days or so, get that done. Yeah, I think sooner we put them on, I don't think this is going to take them by surprise, but.
But I think we can move ahead with our Victus group that we need to plan as if the entire dirt lot is going to go away.
Oh, yeah.
And with, between that. And uh asking for a little bit demographics and future projections, now give us an updated plan.
Well, I would, I would hope that you've asked them, look, assuming that we cut a deal with Ogden City, all our existing improvements go away. Can we put, what do we put up if we have seventy five acres that we can put our, on our dirt? Or are we going to be required to go somewhere else?
So you're saying even if the uh southern half goes away completely where the assets are or?
Yeah. I'm just saying, if, let's say that we, let's say that we make a deal with Ogden City. And and they come in and, as far as suggested, they come in and buy out our lease. Okay, they buy our lease, they own the, they own the improvements at that point in time, we have to go somewhere else. Do we build on that seventy five acres?
Or go to the west?
That we own, or do we look at an alternative site somewhere in Weaver County?
And also, I think we need uh. A plan, knowing the parking's going away and stay existing where we are.
Exactly.
Solid plan.
I'm just saying, yeah, that's, that should be on the agenda for a plan.
Absolutely, because the fairgrounds isn't going away.
Yeah.
It could be relocated, but it's not going away.
We worked, reworked.
Yeah.
Yeah, so do, do, obviously we got to take the parking into consideration. That parking to the west is going away. So any plan then, one of the plans, what happens if we move that, we take out the, you know, stuff to the, to the east? And start from scratch.
And it's, and that parking out west isn't going away today.
No, no.
And it may even be five years or ten years from now, but eventually, that's what we're planning on. It's going to be. It, I'm, I'm not, we're, we're going to lose that fight. We won't have that fight.
Just, just back to your comment, though, Commissioner For about the, the, a new mayor, uh it could completely change the opinion of the city. You, you don't, I mean, it could.
Well, it could, other than we know where the revenue source is.
Yeah.
And I don't think the revenue source is going to go away based on mail.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, that's a big, that's a cash cow out there.
No, I, I know, but um. Well, I was just, I, I, I would think, knowing some of the candidates that. That may not be the most important to some of those candidates that are in the race, I don't know.
Well, it may not be now, now, but it will be when they start looking at budgets.
Budgets, six months from now.
None, none of them are looking at it now, but the minute they're sitting in that seat and then they have to make determination, and they got Scott Park looking over their shoulder.
Their finance guys are going to remind them that it's an important issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, they may not think it's important, but believe me, Marty, it's important.
Yeah, they need Blake Moore to do it, or at least somebody.
Yeah.
Well, Blake's been pretty loyal to us.
Yeah.
You know, when Ogden City's made those plays, he's called us and said, you guys really support removing that? I said, no. We've had those relationships. That's what I hope people understand.
Yeah, but I, I think we'll, we'll continue to have good relationship, but still, at the end of the day. The dollar will drive the decisions on both sides. So. We just need to face that reality.
Well, I, I wonder if it's worth a, do we know what our assets are worth? Is there, is there a way to find out what the assets would cost them?
Seven years ago, I told them a hundred million dollars and they laughed, laughed in my face. Two years ago, they came back and says, you were low, it should be about a hundred and twenty. I said, you should have took the deal. Should have took the deal seven years ago. Listen, this is the.
I don't know how that would ever pencil.
Wouldn't it be kind of similar to what Victus is gonna bring?
In this case, it probably comes down to what it costs to replace it.
Yeah.
Do we have a ballpark on that study? Did they come back with like a ballpark estimate of what it would be? Are you planning to include that on your budget file so we can get that on that? I don't, you don't, we don't wanna talk about what the number is here, but.
Yeah, they did. We'll, 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 it'll be on there.
Okay.
But it, it's a.
Okay, Marty, Jennifer, anything else? I think we're gonna go ahead and, Portland, we'll set up the meeting. We'll get the letter to them and then we'll do the reservation in that order.
Yes, and that will all be kind of on your, your guys' side to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you folks. You wanna tell them we're ready out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doc, come again, we can have fun.
Mr. Bond out of the box.
I think Mr. Bond should go to jail. Did you see what he did to his hair?
I.
No, what did he, I didn't see him today, but I.
He got a mustache weeded or something.
Well, he'll be back in a week.
Well, I told him it was wrong. It was the wrong thing to do.
Hey, you're kinda like the star of the news.
There we go.
Lauren, I'm here to tell you, I don't know how he might be with B F S, but anytime he wants something done, he gives me a call.
Ooh, good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, how are you? How you doing here?
Good. How you doing? Good, how are you?
Good.
Come right over here, man.
All right, all right.
All the important people are sitting over there, so we're gonna come over here.
Yeah, there you go.
Do you need a taser just in case?
Yes, yes. Okay, we got Jason here. We can get started, right?
Started, let's go.
What else you got coming from your side, Jason? Anybody?
No, no, excuse me.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Uh, we got some people joining us online. This is the two thirty discussion regarding the paramedic service study. Lisa Schwartz, Eli's here, Scott's here, Jason Horn and Matt.
She, Matt is not here.
Okay, and let's start down this end and introduce who else we got.
I'm Bob Groh, I'm the physician medical director for the paramedic program.
Okay.
Cody Dre, I'm the EMS chief of Weaver Park.
Got it.
Mike Dean, Roy Fire Deputy.
Yep, we know, not Eli.
Mike Slater, Ogden Park.
Rick Clark, uh, deputy chief of the park.
Got it. We introduced Lisa. I think we, Scott Parker, I think we got everybody. Okay, so who's taking the lead on this? Lisa, you're first, but.
We're gonna let Eli go ahead.
Okay, Eli, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, basically just a, a, a brief out, um, on the paramedic service study that, uh, the, the funds for last year. Uh, we've been almost eighteen, well, not quite eighteen months in the process from R F P uh, to the time that we have a, a final draft and a final presentation, uh, on the paramedic program. Uh, the services provided to the county, uh, citizens of the county through that paramedic program. Um, to start off, I'd just like to turn time over to, uh, Stu with City Gate. Um, he is the, the project lead with City Eight. We're contractors that were hired to conduct the study for the theory. And he basically is presented, gonna present a brief out on the findings of the study and recommendations moving forward, uh, for the commission to consider and allow us to help kind of move forward in our budgeting process with the paramedic program. Hopefully for about the next six, seven years, being able to provide us a, a path of how we'd like that program to evolve to maintain the service that we're providing to the citizens then.
Great, okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Here, you're coming in good, yep.
Stu, Gary, Public Safety Principal for City Gate Associates. Nice to see you all again. Uh, in interest of your agenda time management, you, you have a choice i- if you want. I have about thirty slides and thirty minutes to go through the technical work and the findings and recommendations. The technical work has not materially changed since we briefed you three at mid-project. If you wanna skip to findings in terms of time management, it's your call. Or for the others in the room, I'll go through the entire briefing.
Well, we show an hour. Hopefully we won't take that long. Um, how much time, how much time do you need, Jason, after he makes his presentation?
I'm good.
Well, if you could, let's do your thirty minutes and we'll see what we can do after that.
Very good. I'm gonna start a screen share.
And it looks like we got your slides front of us, right? Okay.
If the printer, if the printer gods worked and Eli got it, yes, you did.
Yeah, it looks like he burned a few trees for this, so that's good.
Yeah, he did. We did. Uh, is the PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, just a general reminder, project scope was to take a data-driven review of your county-coordinated, uh, paramedic service program and to try to do some growth and in future service needs forecasting. We, uh, start deployment and, and projects like this with a risk assessment. And that was to establish the current population density on a base map, identify the values at risk clinically. What the medical director, the program policies are delivering for patient care, customer service today. We were tasked to identify growth patterns in the community that could impact current future service levels. And we also reviewed the historical treatments. So, uh, when you say paramedic, there's a list of technical skills and there's a list of drug administrations they can use on different patient situation. If you just a base map in the study, uh, without going through, uh, all, all the pages you have, uh, there, we have the locations of all of the ambulance and fire department stations. The blue circles are the paramedic squad locations. And the boxes are just literally a data management box typically by agency. Ogden, for example, has multiple data management boxes, but the report talks about data in areas. Most importantly, when we shift to population density with darker shades, the heaviest, your po- your principal population clusters, as you all know, are in the north-south corridor. More in the eastern county at the, at the toe of the hills. And then you've got some gradual suburban growth to the west of that. And then you've got more suburban, what I call suburban rural growth, and then very rural open space growth. The road network and the north-southeast-west streets outside of the urban downtown areas is a challenge for any paramedic service delivery system. Time over distance matters on a small number of the patient care situations. Briefly going through growth, and there's several pages on this in the study. Uh, and I'm gonna summarize Ogden up to about twenty forty-five is a two percent growth rate. Now, in twenty twenty-one, they processed thirty-two hundred and ninety-six units under planning consideration. If those were all approved, some were mid-high residential. Conceivably at Og- Ogden's population ratio, that's nine thousand more residents to the city. Not saying that's next year. That's saying units in the pipeline that could take a decade more or less to build out. Roy's gonna see about two hundred and thirty-eight more population, uh, or units, not very much by twenty thirty, different end game measurement for Roy. The fire district, uh, which of course is large in terms of acreage is gonna see probably county growth rates of about one-two, one point two percent through thirty-seven. It remains the fourth largest service area in the state. If we, the little bit of data we could got for Weber and the unincorporated sees perhaps fifty percent of that or maybe a thousand units. Northview at Build Out could, could reach seventy-five to eighty thousand people with two to three-story a multifamily and high-end residential, about twenty-six hundred to seventy units are on the drawing board. That's another seventy-eight hundred people. Riverdale, uh, is also lightly growing, South Ogden's lightly growing. And the county unincorporated area, uh, some of that sees maybe fourteen percent growth. I wanna caution everybody in the room, what's important and what I'm about to do is calls per thousand. Don't pay attention to the growth rate percentages. A small community with a few hundred units of growth thinks it's a big percent number, and as a percent, the number's high for the actual head count, right, that the, the souls to be protected. Uh, the, the count of people matters. So if I took all of the population projections, it could be seventy thousand more people by twenty forty-five. That sounds like a ginormous number. Let's just pretend for as an illustration, at the current city of Ogden rate of sixty-one paramedic calls per thousand population, that seventy thousand people, if it happened in a Disneyland overnight sense, would be forty-two hundred and ninety-five calls, twelve a day, or point five per hour. If you an- annualized that out to twenty forty-five, the entire system would see about a hundred and eighty-seven more calls per year for half a call a day. So in deployment, let's talk about what are we currently serving? What is the growth going to do to call per day rates? And also think in a few slides about peak hour demand in the afternoon when the system's the busiest. But if you just do linear map projection, yes, you're growing. The percentages in some communities sound significant. Later, if you have questions, right now, the biggest, fastest-growing fire district in the state of Texas is my client. You wanna talk growth rates, I can talk you, you're off about what's going on in Houston, Harris County, uh, in Fort Worth, who was a client last year. You've got modest, nice growth. Yes, you're evolving as a county. Service demand, number of incidents for the paramedic system are growing year over year. Uh, stayed flat as, as everybody did during, uh, uh, the COVID and the shutdown phase. And you're growing out of that in terms of total calls. The number of incidents by month over four data years is pretty constant, and the green bars twenty-one, twenty-two, so there's the growth. And I show you this to say, a, a client will occasionally say, can I have a third less paramedics on the street certain months of the year? Do I have a tourism or weather demand cycle? No. You have a constant twelve-month cycle for paramedic demand. Likewise, day of the week. Little variability, a little quieter on Sunday, but you know, even on Sunday morning early, you still generate paramedic calls for service. You need a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five system. We then, uh, uh, went down a, a bit of a data deeper hole to show the diversity of demand in the system, and this is by area. So you can see Ogden, Roy and the fire district all break more than a thousand calls per year. Northview's right on the edge. The other areas are smaller. But the ta- this is a tale of two systems. The three rescuers in Ogden and everybody else. So when we look at the incident performance times, if you include Ogden in a single county-wide measure, Ogden has three units closer to the most calls. And that's gonna swing the response time map. I'm gonna say that about three times in the next few slides. So the number of incidents is growing. Midnight's on the left, midnight's on the right. Uh, you start to wake up during, you know, early morning rush hour. As people get become, become more active, you start to reach a plateau about eleven A M. And that tends to taper more slowly, uh, through mid-late evening hours, and that's indicative of a more northern client. Especially during long daylight periods, people are out recreating, doing activity things after work. They have auto accidents, they get hurt, et- etcetera, but you still have paramedic demand at three A M. People can still wake up in the middle of the night with chest pain, difficulty breathing. You need a twenty-four-hour day system. I don't see enough seasonal or daily variation to say, put on one more thing, but only do it part of the time. If we then look at simultaneous incidents with five paramedic rescues retrospectively last data year, two calls, which is one simultaneous occurrence, two lightning strikes happens fifty-three percent of the time. Mainly in the afternoon. So you have five paramedic squads. Every time one call is open, odds are two calls are open. And triple odds are is in Ogden, which is why you have three units there. Two or more, which is three simultaneous occurrences, twenty percent steps down pretty radically. And then three or four, pretty rarely. So the question becomes, do we maintain response times when we surge at least two units? Together, do we, what do we have left? We'll talk about that clinically also. The average incident duration out of service for a paramedic squad is forty-seven minutes. By time their dispatch, drive somewhere, assist the ambulance and fire, first responder fire crew with the patient, get them to the hospital, get clear enough of the hospital to retell dispatch, I'm back in service, forty-seven minutes. This table looks at the utilization of each paramedic rescue by the percent of an hour. In the most recent year, they were committed to an open incident clock. So this is, uh, real hard time measures in dispatch. You're on an active call, what percent of every hour? And you can see squad rescue one is the busiest in the left-hand column. There's eleven A M through about the seven to eight P M hour. Our threshold in busier urban systems is to not be above thirty percent hour after hour. So yes, you're busy. You're not yet at the critical tripwire to add another unit. Especially even in rescue area one, five and three. But five, five and three are in the high teens to low twenties. It won't take too much more call for service volume. Peak hours the day, afternoon, early evening to push rescue one up to thirty percent utilization hour after hour. And when you hit thirty percent, eight, ten hours running, you're, all you're doing is going to calls, barely getting a meal break, uh, cleaning up, refueling, and you're back out on the road again. You're not yet that busy of an urban system. Response time performance. You currently as a system do not have county response time or outcome-driven goals by which to say, this is the tripwire and we've eroded below the tripwire. So one of the purposes of this study was to tell you how you're doing and to even if you want to consider a response time-based policy. Some of your partners in the room and others are adopting best practices-based measures for their fire and local ambulance deployment. Your system does use rapid dispatch on critical calls and clinical call priority sorting is used on all calls. Those are best practices. We studied response time measures as dispatched because as good as your communication center is by having acute calls be handled very quickly on a very simple, uh, uh, doctor-driven set of questions. They don't timestamp it. There's no keyboard button push that says, I got this unconscious person dispatched in only forty-five seconds. And somebody else with a broken ankle took two minutes. All I can see in your data stream is hello, what's the problem? To ninety percent of the calls being sent to the responders. We then looked at clerical severity types and your call processing. Long story short, national, uh, uh, best practices-based system goes from A, alpha being the least acute to, to E, echo, uh, being the worst of the worst. Over four years, those two more acute categories only accounted for twenty-four, call it twenty-five thousand uh, of the total incidents over four years. If you look at response times compared to best practices, dispatch should be ninety seconds from hello to notifying the unit. Uh, you're up to three minutes and five seconds. You're ninety-five seconds past best practices because you're bifurcating. You're getting the life and death stuff out the door and then you're continuing to triage the call as to what to send after that. And this is your full call processing, as I just mentioned. Crew turnout is a little sluggish at twenty-seven seconds over a city get recommended two-minute best practice. Your squad travel time, you don't have a performance goal, but many urban systems would want the first paramedic, not the first responder, first paramedic, full paramedic on scene in eight travel minutes, give or take eight or nine total response minutes. You, with five squads, with frequent two squad calls at once, system-wide, you're getting the first paramedic is seven minutes and fifty-nine seconds. So when you listen to your different stakeholders in the room, Ogden is mathematically driving the eight-minute successful performance. Three squads, lots of calls. And as we go further west, the story changes. So now let's look at travel time by agency, just for the most acute call types. And you can pick, uh, your, your, your favorite, uh, uh, agency in there. But I just wanna point you to, to both the time and the numbers. So you can look at Ogden in the far right column, twenty-one, twenty-two. Ogden's hitting ninety percent of the critical calls in seven, seven minutes travel time. Yes, and the sample size is two thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven occurrences. Roy, now the math falls down. Roy's taking eight nineteen travel. Weber, bigger footprint district for a squad to get out to some parts of Weber, ten minutes. Weber, bigger footprint district for a squad to get out to some parts of Weber, ten minutes. Nine minutes, eight minutes, eight minutes, seven, you can see there. But you also see the tail of the quantity there out in Washington Terrace, it's two hundred twelve serious calls a year. So we then mapped performance by those CAD uh, computer aided dispatch polygons. Green here are where, where squads arrived. In less than eight minutes, and I didn't put all the dots on the map because the point of the map is the dots past eight minutes. So here you can see uh, in the fire, in the Weber Fire District. And elsewhere and up in the north and far southeast. You have calls exceeding eight minutes, and we'll get to clinically what's out there in a moment. Now, as a reminder, this map is four years of calls past eight minutes. In the steady or breakout maps year by year. So don't assume down and down, for example, in the southwest corner of the county. That that cluster dots is a one month or twelve month snowstorm. It's not. It's four years worth of squad arrivals greater than eight minutes. We mapped it out. Let's talk about deployment analysis, a computer generated program for travel time would say. From the current squad, paramedic, county funded locations, blue dots. Eight minute travel on the road network essentially gets to your population density map. If you go back later, when you're looking at the paper, remember the population density area. In theory, five squads covers the vast majority of your most populated road network. I have no critique of where the squads currently are located. If you then look at all incidents over the entire four years. Now you start to see a density pattern emerge, right? Ogden city limits versus some of the other zones. And some of the other commu- community areas. You'll also see what you might think are some curious patterns commonsensically, like dots in a straight line out west. Those are traffic accidents on a road. Or they're a ranch house, you know, single acre uh, or single house on five acre address. So it's not uncommon to see incident locations follow the road network where you have a lot of passenger trips. Hospital arrivals only. So then clinically, your medical director in the system could say. Where do incidents on the dirt more likely than not generate a trip to the hospital? Because remember, not everybody needs a trip to the hospital. They call, they're stressed, they don't understand what's wrong with themselves or their family member. Sometimes the first responder gets there and takes care of it. And says, you know, you can call your medical provider or go to the urgent care center. You don't need an expensive trip to the emergency room. So here again. Population density drives calls for service where you have greater populations per square mile. They're more likely to need emergency room transports today. So then we looked back and again looked at. These incidents by paramedic travel time, just the acute incidents, the Cs and Ds, past eight minutes, smaller sample. Uh, where we really had acutes, but. You have to note in, in the four years data. Up north, out west, a little bit more southeast. You do have very acute paramedic calls west of an eight minute delivery system. Similar version, I'm just going to pass that. Let's talk about clinical acuity in terms of time. So here are the acute dispatch types ranked by volume. So if you were to ask your doc, and he knows this off the top of his head, uh, categorically. Hey, last data year, what was the most common serious call of the paramedic system? Some unknown breathing problem. Unconscious people, I'm generally sick, but I sound pretty sick to the dispatcher. Chest pain, classic, traffic accident, classic, seizures, stroke. Cardiac arrest is way down at four hundred and ninety seven. So if you also think that the entire clinical system should pivot around. Uh, a full cardiac arrest CPR in progress. In one year, it's a little more than once a day. Four hundred and ninety seven times overdose, unconscious, breathing, fall, sick. So we've done some clinical review here to help the leadership in the room, not just the commission, evaluate what the system is actually treating. So then we shifted to medication usage. And skill usage, and in your system, I complimented you last time, you have what's called an advanced EMT. Certification on all the fire department ambulances. Many, many urban communities across the US do not use advanced EMTs. So we broke the skill, the medicines down. Seventy percent of the total medication list approved by the doctor. Goes to advanced EMTs. Thirty percent are reserved to paramedics only. So that's the seventy thirty split. Let's see how they're administered. If you look at medication administrations. The biggest legally, it's a medicine, is oxygen and saline in an IV in case I have to push a drug. So sixty percent of the, of the occurrences are getting an oxygen and IV. Let's set those aside. For harder medicines that I am using to really treat something from a drug overdose to heart problem, seizures. I use acute medicines forty percent of the calls. Okay, that's a, that's a, that's a significant number. You are getting to sick people. Paramedic reserve medications are only used to twenty two percent of the calls. So said this way, in the entire universe of five paramedic squads. In calendar twenty two. The medicines reserve, reserved for paramedics were administered six hundred and seventy two times. Your advanced EMTs, fabulous system. They're getting to a lot of patients with medications that other systems would wait for the paramedics to come deliver. Then by area, we broke down the medication without oxygen and saline. The serious medication usage, not surprisingly, it's volume and socioeconomically driven, is Ogden, seventy three percent. Everybody else falls down to twenty six percent. Population density less, maybe a bit more affluent, better access to healthcare, et cetera, et cetera, all those things that go into whether or not. Mrs. Smith calls nine one one or not. We then looked at physical procedures, and I'll just generally say splinting, bandaging and airway. It's anything other than pushing a drug. But it's a very technical certified procedure. EMTs, this is the more even split. Fifty one point six percent of the procedures an E advanced EMT can do. It takes a full paramedic to do forty eight percent or fifteen other procedures. If we look at the breakdown by usage, a bit more fifty fifty. EMTs first can be on their own fifty four percent of the time. And when the paramedics get there forty five percent of the time, uh, they're, they are using advanced procedures. That's a bit higher than the drug utilization. And I'll go out on a limb here, Dr. Grothman, I haven't discussed this, but most of that's going to be airway management. If you discount, why are they using advanced procedures so often? It's more likely advanced airway management and, and cardiac defibrillation and other skills. If you look at the procedures uh, by area. Ogden's using advanced paramedic procedures seventy one percent of the time. If we clustered the two Weber Roy squads together, they're at thirty percent of the time. So it just gives you a flavor as you talk about cost benefit analysis. And where, when and how to spend the money, whom are we treating and why, within what timeframe? So our findings overall, there are no ALS. Advanced life support response time measures today. For me to say, well, you're sixty seconds or a thousand calls past your customer service benchmark. Using population density and a more common best practice of eight minutes travel time in our experience for the first paramedic. The current five squad system today is reaching the highest population density areas. It is not broken. It's getting busier. It will eventually break under the strain in Ogden first. The historical incident review for four years again showed seven minutes, fifty nine seconds to ninety percent of all calls. This also tells me the GIS computer travel time projection model. And the historical statistics are in sync. Sometimes the model be out of whack, computer model ends up too fast or too slow to real world practice. Your model's in sync. Your hour over hour utilizations are not yet at saturation. Rescue one needs a yellow light caution placed on it. The simultaneous demand is not yet excessive. But if the two open incidents are in Ogden. You have three paramedic squads left in the system. And if a, a more suburban edge rural area calls for help, is the closest squad available. It would be a little worse if one of the western located squads. And an Ogden squad is simultaneously busy. Because then perhaps a larger slice of the county may wait for the squad. Low usage of paramedic skills and medicines compared to other cities where we reviewed paramedic skills. But I want to slow down here and say, most systems we work on don't have advanced EMTs on the ambulances. So I'll go through the percentages just, just again. Here's what your medical director is rightfully concerned about and has to be part of this conversation. EMS systems really care about skill and medicine usage rates. Said this way, there can be too many paramedics. Too many paramedics don't see enough acutely ill people. To really have the physical and, and mental diagnostic skills to see trouble coming. Sixty seconds before the patient really takes a bad turn. That just takes hands on, it's year over year experiencing acutely, if not broadly ill. People. So physicians have to kind of balance, well, how many calls do I have? And I can have a hundred paramedics, but if all they do is give oxygen and IVs ninety nine percent of the time. Um, what's the rest of the time look like? And I'm not saying there's a right and wrong answer there. I just want the elected officials to know there is that constructive tension. Growth rates are modest year over year. Uh, Ogden's are certainly going to stay the busiest. Most of your growth is going to increase in your core already urban population areas. I don't see a new city springing up out of the grasslands. However, the outer call volumes and advanced skill needs in the edge areas today are lower. And typical of other suburban systems, you've got the advanced EMTs. They get there quickly with an ambulance capable of transporting the patient to the hospital. And we, we talked to the system managers and said, is it rare or somewhat common? And they go, well, it's not rare, but yes, if the advanced EMT gets there with an ambulance. Is concerned the patient should not wait for the paramedic. They'll take the patient to the hospital. They, they, if the paramedic says I'm twelve minutes out, maybe sometimes they don't wait for the paramedic. And we gave you tables in the report, and we actually talked about arrival times to different areas. So our concluding recommendations are, the study's timely, this is not a criticism. It's just a finding of fact, the si- the system must evolve, it's time to have the conversation. The, as the communities pass the core urban coverage plan are slowly growing year over year, and they're not going to stop growing. Unless there's something going on in Utah, Land use, I don't understand. Uh, discussions need to begin now and where and how to increase the number of paramedics at whose expense, for what reason. We would recommend that the paramedic system adopt a response time metric for the different slices of total response time. From call pickup, you should monitor how effective the dispatch center is. You should monitor crew turnout times that they get out the door quickly, especially a serious call. You should monitor travel times. And most urban systems. Would want a call to paramedic unit arrival, give or take the twelfth minute from nine one one saying hello, what's the problem? That twelve minutes means the fire first responder got there about seven, eight, or in the ninth minute. To start to slow the clock, assess the patient and the problem, start oxygen. Start physical stabilization, let's say a fracture, and then the paramedic walks in the door. And, and they're off to a higher level of care as needed. We would suggest the system had dropped a paramedic hour over hour utilization rate of thirty percent. And you do need a threshold there to say, when are those top squads getting too busy? I would also adopt a threshold to limit simultaneous demand for five units to three calls at a time. If you start to see three units at a time, all active, forty, fifty percent of the time. Even if the hourly utilization is only, let's say twenty eight percent hour over hour, you're down to two paramedic units. Well, if you've got three busy, most of the, most of the peak hours the day. These are strategies and these are just strategies. I don't expect the commission uh, to know that they're other than strategies here. These get into your medical director and the systems discussions. On how to reinforce eight minute paramedic travel time in the outer growing suburban and rural areas. Methods used elsewhere. Some systems will adopt longer travel time metrics for full paramedics. And it just accept the fact that rural, less dense areas don't get the same level of customer service response time. Some systems will adopt split response time measures based on population density. Very urban, eight minute paramedic spacing. Uh, suburban rural, maybe get ten, twelve, even fifteen minute paramedic spacing. And I currently have a rural client in uh, for San Diego County, for example. And in the mountainous desert regions of San Diego County, there is no way they have the fire station spacing or the road network to deliver. Eight to twelve minute urban uh, lifesaving service. It just, it just is impossible with fiscally and operationally to deliver. You could add two, two more paramedic squads, that would be four paramedics a, a, a day, twelve, a full time personnel. Uh, where the growth is occurring, uh, just outside the suburban ring area. We discussed uh, with the doc, other systems, I kind of moved to one and one, one paramedic and one advanced EMT. If you added a couple of squads or units with one and one. A squad would be available for paramedic only calls. If you start putting paramedics on the ambulances, when the ambulance transports a low acute patient. You've just lost that paramedic, right, to the next call. So in kind, we, we need to think through, if I'm going to put more paramedics out there. How many and how do I deploy them? Post policy strategies, uh, mo- and EMS systems increasingly now, you can't pick up the national news without seeing these stories. EMS has never been fully supported based on billed revenues. And the changes in Medicare, Medi-Cal, and whether you're an Obamacare expansion state or not, are further putting the screws to EMS revenue. Now you're a public provider, I'm just reminding the commission where you already sadly know. Transport revenues enough won't erase the need for some level of taxpayer subsidy. And that's not a local issue. Again, it's a national issue. So the county has some choices. It's could increase its expense subsidy to add paramedics. It can wait a little longer uh, as growth occurs. Some of the departments, I've interviewed them all, some of the leaderships, I'm not going to name names today. Say get out of her way, uh, give us the money to add a couple of paramedics per day. You could also split that cost, you could say, look, the system's not ready to do it, or we need to talk to the taxpayers a year or two from now. But in the meantime. In terms of medical control, you and the state could say, you want to add a couple of paramedics to the Acme Fire District at, at your expense. Be our guest. They then have to have medical direction, state approval to put paramedics in, in those areas. Not an easy step either, so I'm not being Pollyanna here, that you just throw the switch and say, do what you want to do. There's a whole regulatory approval process based on clinical and volume of incident necessity. So today, uh, we, I submit the, the best use of the report is to really. Have the technical teams absorb the content findings and recommendations. Bring back if the commission wants at a future point, response time measures for future commissions. And system managers to operate by. And to start the process to identify the funding by county, by themselves or with their partners. On how to add a modest number of paramedics to the edge areas of the current system. Thanks for the attention and I'm a little long. Now you have the full meal. Thanks.
Great. Wow, that's a lot of information.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so based upon that, do you have any recommendations in terms of our previous discussion? Obviously, the paramedics.
Yeah, as, as we've discussed uh, with, with the, the, with Roy Weaver and, and Ogden in our meetings. As we've talked with Stu and, and kind of taking his recommendations um, as part of his presentation. Um, I think the consensus is initially, um, the, the best practice that we can do uh, short term. Is to start the process of adopting that response time metric. Um, simply because that's going to give us the best measure of when the system truly is beginning. To get stressed to the point that, that we need to pull the trigger on funding additional uh, paramedic units to field.
Right.
Um, I think that that is probably the best way to go about to figure out. You know, just when the system truly is becoming stressed to the point that we need to add or modify. Um, I know I'm talking to Chief Slater and he can speak directly to the issue. Um, I know when talking to Chief Slater, and he can speak directly to the issues with Rescue One and their plans as far as monitoring it.
Yeah, we we look at the unit utilization because they're our busiest truck, and at times we can rotate personnel. Through that truck to a different medic truck, but we find when they hit that twenty four, twenty five percent. Is exactly what was Stu Stu stated is their patient care reports suffer a little bit, their truck checks suffer a little bit. Their bellies aren't as full as some of the other units because they don't have the time, there's they're a little more sleep deprived on that forty hour shift. We watch how we manage that internally, we see the team moving through a floor unit and then recycle them. So that is something with the response model, I think we absolutely need to adopt. A response matrix, whether it's eight minute rural, ten, ten minute, or sorry, eight minute um urban in ten minutes rural. Or we develop a ten minute overall, the the. The pro we have in this county is that everybody's an advanced E M T, so they're getting access immediately. The locations of the fire stations throughout this county, you have firefighters working. And E M Ps on scene within four to five to six minutes on emergency call. With the exception of maybe Wes Warren, which I know there's future plans for a fire station out there. And maybe some of the stuff in the upper value, which wasn't part of the study. But I think as a county, our fire and E M T system. Fantastic. So we will monitor the unit organization for our three rescue trucks, we were doing the same, I know boys doing the same.
So, you know, obviously, Ogden City has the biggest share of calls. And, you know, obviously, the probably needed the shortest calls. Before you get to the the patient, so how are you working, you know, you talked about, you've got what, three units now?
Hmm, that's right.
So is there coordination between the other, so that you can call up, you know, we they talked about, okay, what if one out west is busy and.
Absolutely.
Or one of yours is busy, then all of a sudden where you take the primary hit seventy, look like seventy plus percent, how do you, how do you deal with that?
So the dispatch system, they do that, so they they have the next closest units up. And I'll be honest with you, they get called dispatched. Most of the time, what happens is the unit is hurrying clears from the hospital because they're close to the emergency. So the patient reports will stack up, so the restocking stacks up, and they respond on a call. Um, within this county, as far as the paramedic program goes, and I will speak for Dr. Grohl, but we have two physicians. Dr. Grohl is our main medical position and Dr. Sil from the K D, we meet quarterly. Weaver, Roy, and Ogden, to make sure that all our protocols are on the same page, all our trains on the same page, all our equipment. You can jump on a Weaver truck, an Ogden truck, and function both vehicles.
Okay.
And so.
Great.
We work in sync, it's not Ogden City paramedic, or Roy City paramedic, or Weaver County paramedic. It's Weaver County, oh, sorry, Weaver Fire Paramedic, it's Weaver County paramedic, and even though we wear different shirts, we function as one unit. And that's a credit to Dr. Grohl, and actually, the system was built in this county. Uh, the last thing, if you want to say about that is, we're extremely surgical in how we deliver our service. Because of the advanced D M T and the paramedic service, and I'm going to use our cardiac arrest survival rate, for example. The the average res- uh, return of spontaneous circulation, so if a paramedic arrives on a cardiac arrest, they start CPR, they push their medications. By the time that person gets to the hospital, the state averages about twenty three to twenty six percent of the time, that person has a pulse and has a blood pressure. And Weaver County, as of of calendar year twenty three, we're at sixty percent. The, and we started lower, right, and we've improved because of our communication. The survivability rate coming out of a hospital with cardiac arrests is the state average of about three point seven, three point nine percent. Um, or twenty twenty two data for this county was twelve point seven percent. So the system works, you've got extremely experienced paramedics that are are doing this day in and day out. And surgical in how they other responds.
Okay, so did you say that most of your people are all advanced D M Ts?
Every every ambulance in Weaver County are advanced D M Ts.
They're all, okay.
Most agents, so.
Okay. Good to know.
To be hired in Ogden City, you have to be advanced.
Okay, to even get hired.
Mm-hmm.
Thing I liked about it, if I can cut in here too, is that, you know, when they're. I realized that we're up towards, I really appreciated this, this was a fantastic presentation, full. Wonderful data to help us make good decisions. But the fact that it's towards that upper end of that eight minutes means that the. That the people who are responding are getting more and more and more experience all the time. Versus somebody who only gets a call once a week, or doesn't get to see all the different things that are going on, I. Skill level of our guys gotta be compared outside this agency, it's gotta be phenomenal.
And and Stuart kind of mentioned it in his presentation, it's a balancing act that we need to work with. In that adding another paramedic unit or two more paramedic units to the county, just to meet that response time on scene goal. Doesn't necessarily benefit the citizen of that paramedic that's required to stabilize that airway, hasn't done it in six months.
Right.
Or has never done it in the field before, and 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 Stuart talked about that, that balancing act, that tension in the system. That by design ensures that that the the paramedics are they're arriving on scene are capable and and skilled enough to provide that care. Uh, to the citizens when they do arrive on scene.
Well, and if I, and if I could applaud the outside agencies, the the non-paramedic agencies, they do such a fantastic job. Even our own advanced D M Ts, such a fantastic job in getting the advanced stuff done prior to the paramedic stuff being being need to be done. There's, it's just seems to be maybe a seamless system.
Yeah.
Because they're starting patient care before the paramedics get there, a lot of the times they're loaded in the ambulance before the paramedics get there, and at least to a faster transport time. Because it depends if care is in hospital, we need to keep the hospital.
That's good to hear, so, Dr. Grohl, do you see any shortcomings we should be aware of as we look? You know, it appears we're pretty much in balance now, I mean, the paramedic issue in terms of not, you know, maybe having the volume of. Of cases could be problematic in the future, do you you see anything that we should be aware of uh? From a legislative standpoint or funding, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I think Stu is right, you know, we're pretty stable at the moment, but I think there's going to be definite needs over the next three to five years, and we need to start planning for. Whether that's another one or two paramedic trucks, the most considerable costs. Um, but that that has to be in the next five year kind of planning stages, for sure, I would say.
That's kind of what I heard.
Yeah, so I, that's really what we're saying, is we're not immediate, tomorrow, we don't need to have another paramedic.
Yeah.
Truck, but we should be looking at that because they're not cheap, we know.
Two, three, four, five years, something like that, depending on what the.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to balance in the system, you know, we worry a lot about skill degradation with our paramedics, to have enough call volume, enough. Experience to have good care on scene, and I think one of the things that kind of gets lost in all this process is. Once Chief Slater mentioned, you know, having the A E M Ts both within the agencies that are here and our other, you know, colleagues around the county. You know, most people are getting immediate care within six, seven minutes.
Right.
And a lot of the really acute emergencies, even cardiac arrests, the A E M Ts can start that initial care in the same way that the paramedics can.
Okay.
Now, the paramedics bring a lot of experiences, seeing, um, but a lot of those things can be dealt with and managed initially by the U D Ts. That's, we are kind of an outlier in that regard, looking at some of the other big squad agencies nationally, they run paramedics and basic U D Ts. So there is a significant divide between that response. Ours is a little bit more narrow, but we know between what the A E M Ts do and what our paramedics do.
Great.
So it's it's a, it's a, it's a very functional system, and you know, as the county grows, we need to grow too.
Right. All right, I appreciate it, anyone else?
I I would just like to thank Eli and um Stu from City Gate. They did a fantastic job, and there was a ton of work and effort that had to go into that, and. There was a lot of phone calls, want more data, want more more data, and more data, sometimes we'd give them something and that wasn't good enough. So I would like to just personally thank, hopefully thank um Stu and Eli and Lisa for the work they put in on this project. And thank you for the funding.
This is great, no, when we, when we talked to Stu, what was it, last fall sometime, or?
Was this earlier this spring?
Yeah, when we looked at that, it was like, okay, this, what do we going to get out of this, and it appears that we've got good value for what the money we spent, so. Stu, I appreciate the the work you've done on that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bollos, any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to commissioners have us consider, you know, we we made the decision last fall. So to have uh City Gate do this study.
Yeah.
And here we are, eight, nine months later, ten months, whatever that is later. I'd like to kind of set a clock two years from now. And run this again, so we can take all the data that we've got now and just maybe have this updated.
Sure.
Again, I think that would be responsible, and in the meantime, Scott, as we head into our budget, we start maybe setting aside a little bit of. This is just my rec- one recommendation, that maybe start setting aside something in preparation of adding one more. And when that will be, we'll. Well, at least we'll get kind of get a jumpstart on it now, so then, when that will be, we'll have some kind of a jumpstart, and and I think if. If we start this two years from now, getting the report two and a half years from now or so. We'll, we'll have a better idea of exactly where that will need to be placed. Uh, based on the calls, because some of the recommendations that uh Mr. Gray made, or Gary. Stuart, or is it Stuart made?
It's two last names, two first names, hey, hey, you works.
Right, you do, so. Some of those permits that he used to gather data, we know those those build outs have already happened. Those of us in the room know that's already happened, so with the uh especially, you know, within Ogden City. And South Ogden's another area, a lot of build out of a higher density in those areas, I think we're going to see somewhat of a little bit of a shift. A lot of those uh, those multi-level apartment type townhouse apartments are are in, they're in living in now, so. I think it'll be a a good uh uh thing for us to plan, sorry, long-winded, but that's, hopefully you get it.
Yeah, no, I think Scott can bring us those train lines, he can bring us fund balances and.
We have enough, we, so we we planned for this several years ago, we have enough in there to do the initial outline to get another paramedic unit. What we don't have is the money to operate it.
Right.
Year after year, so when we pull that trigger, we're going to have to look at the revenue sources, i.e. the tax rate. To see what we need to do to cover that additional cost, but it makes sense to have the the money in the bank right now. To buy the unit, but we don't want to start collecting to operate until we're ready to operate.
No, there's no sense putting money, you know, in this and that fund, so, and so I, yeah, uh, so I appreciate Chief your. And your viewpoints on where we're headed with this, I I would look, I would say the same thing. You know, we're going to depend on you, the future commissioners depend on you to come in and say, okay, we really need to start looking at, okay, a year from now, two years from now. We don't want to wait till it becomes, okay, we've got to have it tomorrow, because then, as Scott mentioned, becomes part of the operations. One thing is to buy the the building, the next thing is the O N M, and that's what we're talking about, is how do we operate it after we get on it?
We could give you a unit report if you'd like to, you know, organization and response time, I think we'll build that model.
Yeah.
For that move, for the information from dispatch.
Yeah, I think that'd be, as you, as we come in for budget session, that would be important information to look at, so we just, we know it's coming, we just like to know a little. Ahead of time before we get there.
If I could offer, Chief Jones had his hand up, and then I have a a observation for you, if you have a knowledge.
Go ahead.
Chief Jones, you had your hand up and then you took it down, or was that a keyboard accident?
Uh, it was just an accident, yeah, just uh, just wanted to say thank you to everybody and the hard work that City Gate put into the study. Um, appreciate all the, that you were able to fit not only the paramedic agencies into this, but also the outside agencies as well. Um, that meant a lot to be able to talk about some of the concerns that we've had as well, and so. Yeah, I appreciate everybody and and the time it was put into this, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, my my suggestion is, I I, I like the forward looking. Hey, we should re- reevaluate, re-study, words to that effect, and pick a number, two and a half years. You have a lot of very good data, software packages running, and some analysis expertise in house. You might want to consider, and there's other companies besides mine, the value of a team like mine is. We're working with big and little systems dozens of time a year. So in terms of knowledge transfer, we see what they're doing, how they're adapting. And we see their data, it's not us going to a conference and listening to a ten PowerPoint slide pitch about the latest greatest. Flavor of the month in EMS. You might ask your staff to say, at some appropriate research point, when we've pulled enough data and think we have a tentative. Recommendation to the commission, ask their research to be peer reviewed before it gets to you. Don't wait till you implement and then retrospectively study and get god knows what opinion. As you migrate forward, have some Socratic peer review. As they pull the data, model, make clinical decisions, and maybe someone like me says, you know, Timbuktu's got the same headache, and they did it that way. And it did or didn't work out so well for him. I think that's where the outside people could probably bring you better value, and I say it this way. I'm I'm happier when I teach departments to fish for themselves and not always have to go outside uh just to pick up a screwdriver.
Yeah. Could agree with you, Warren, we've got the people in place that can do exactly what you're talking about, that full faith. We did, got some great people, anything else?
I just wanted to thank the the commissioners for giving us the money to do the the program. Yeah, and this question about when and where for the next next rescue is not new, we've been talking about it for years.
Yeah.
But not really knowing how to go about figuring that, this study's given us the. The ability to follow the data about when we need it, where we need it, what to watch for, and it's a great thing, I think it's a great thing for the county. You know, we're a fast-growing county, and it's not slowing down, so.
Not slowing down.
It's great to be able to have the tools to make those decisions the right way.
No, you're you're exactly right, and I'll just say this, that, you know, we see your. Paramedic trucks out there, we see your fire trucks, a lot of people probably don't appreciate that. Until such time as they've relied upon those services to save somebody and their family, and that recently happened to me, and I can tell you. Uh, then you start appreciating it.
Absolutely.
Other than that, they're just red trucks driving down the road, uh, when they start saving people and your life and your your family, it becomes pretty important.
Yep.
So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I do know, um, the question's been raised to me as far as when we do receive the final study from City Gate. Uh, distribution of that study, not just to the paramedic agencies, but so that the other uh fire department agencies within the county have asked about how that. Study will be distributed or dispersed out, and I just.
I don't see any reason to.
I don't have any reservation on that at all.
That was, I I don't think it would be an issue, but.
They should have, in my opinion, that's information they need to have, because what they rely upon is just as Stuart said, peer review becomes critical, they know where we stand.
Exactly.
Let's not let them, I mean, this is documentation information, we can advance the ball quite a bit.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, hey, thanks again for taking your time.
I've got one smart, smart aleck comment, you know, save it. Ryan Barker, I need to talk to you, I know you're online, but I'll, I've got one other smart aleck comment for you.
Can't wake him up.
Oh, he's awake, he's a great guy.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Nice, Mr. Richard.
We're right on schedule.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you. Chief, thanks very much, we're good seeing you.
Thanks.
Eli?
Wish Bronco were here to see this.
Yeah, he'd be gone.
You guys didn't want to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see where Darren Bushman got hired by?
Yeah. I saw that. Boy, we're not gonna, you know, he's not gonna be able to spout up all the plans for a living now.
He just bought us ten hours of time and you actually.
I might start going back to you actually.
Yeah.
Those board directors. Here, are you back, did you miss me? Right on. Who else you have coming, anybody? I got his on me. I got, I'll be right back. It can't be out of water. Nice. How are you?
Good.
I'll sit in here so I can be able to sit here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's no sign, well, this side.
Yeah.
You gotta be a little more careful about, but over here, it's all.
I usually sit in one of these two chairs. People involved, so.
Yeah.
This is my uh first. One of these, so. You should have just. I guess you want some stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, sometimes I like that.
Any unhelpers?
No. The only thing in the room that we can is the G Y U. Oh, oh, I say.
Well, I know it's thirty minutes. They could do that. Well, yeah.
Um, and part of that, we're hoping to have some impact. Yeah.
Eric, as soon as I get one other commissioner in, we'll go.
No problem. Hey, Eric, how's it going?
It's going all right.
Good.
There's no AJ.
Guests.
I didn't have time for anything else. Charlie.
Sir.
You know. After going up the canyon for fifty years.
Yeah.
And being slowed down by people who don't know which way to go. I can't tell you how happy I am about those wayfinding signs. People are going to get visitors to the canyon all the time. And it's nice to get the people who are visiting in and off the road so the regular traffic can keep moving.
I'm with you. I'm with you as long as it's not blocking your view.
Maybe we should make some.
Sometimes, you know.
Nobody disputed that, right?
Have you had requests? It's not, it's not in dispute at all.
Have you had requests for movie screenings on the back of the room yet?
Yeah.
Not that idea.
They're big enough.
Yeah, I kind of thought in the back of my mind, it'd be nice to put some retro reflective stars in the back of those in the shape of a constellation. Just use them so they're not just uh, an eyesore.
No, I think they should turn them into billboards.
Yeah, put some.
It'd be a thousand bucks a month.
As much as they did do that dark sky stuff, something to do something like that, that might be really cool.
Driving down the road in the in the dark, none of those are going to be lit up. The backsides of them aren't. Reflective. You just put some stars on there in the shape of a constellation. All the starry night community.
I like it.
It'd be fun to do.
Think that'll make some people happy. All right, Eric, you ready? Let's go with our uh. Three thirty. Wow, we're pretty close to be on schedule. Trails Foundation Northern Utah Day. Eric Manning, you're up.
All right.
I love it when you come here.
Well, that makes two of us. I do too.
Tell us what you've been doing.
So, yes, obviously, um, you know, it's been a big year, just uh, that big snow, snowfall and everything that happened over the winter time. So. Uh, our plans went sideways pretty quick. Um, they changed and we've just been adapting ever since. So we started off. You know, trying to fix a lot of erosion stuff. Uh, there's a lot of avalanches. There was one. Uh, near North Ogden Divide on the Bonneville Shoreline in Pleasant View, a big shoot that we had to go help and clean up with a lot of volunteers. Uh, trimming a lot of trails, been up in North Fork Park a lot. Um, that got overgrown really fast with all the moisture and all the snow hanging the branches over. So got that cleaned up, uh, helping Todd and his crew. Been helping the Forest Service up at Sardine, uh, South Skyline. We're actually building a new section of trail coming out of the North Ogden Divide. Towards Ben Lomond. Um, if you head out that first, I don't know, mile, mile and a half is just a rut. Um, so we went in.
You're talking about going south or?
Uh, yeah, going south or north, excuse me, north towards uh, Ben Lomon Peak.
Okay, north side. Okay.
So right there, um, it's been needing, we. We uh, laid that out about two years ago. Um, Ribbon flagged it, uh, had someone come in and help us out. And finally got the approval to go take care of it. So.
Which, so it's not started, but it's.
It's almost a mile and a half here. What we're doing is about done.
So if I go up there next week, I can use the new trail.
And it's, it's amazing. It really is. Yeah, it looks great.
The rest of the trail in pretty good shape?
It's not too bad. I mean, once you get past that, you just have a lot of rock.
So from the parking lot up there, which the the regular entrance, which way is?
Across the road.
Across the road.
Lomond, yeah, north, yeah.
Yeah, so was it, so yeah, but the old trail's still there, right?
Uh, for now, yeah. But once you get there, you'll see it. It's just beautiful and it's like pretty dirt, a nice trail where the other one looks like a river. So, yeah, and it, uh, we're working with Forest Service to see how best they want to do that. If they want to just. Put some debris there to close that section of trail or not. So, um, it's something we've been wanting to do.
When you're hitting that first goalie, does it cut back? Is that where it comes off?
So once you, once you cross the road where the flashers are, just take, it'll be a quick left and you just follow that and it just winds. It's the, the grade's much better. It's not so steep a section. Um, but if you, you know, I mean, hikers, you're rolling ankles and walking on the side. And if you're on a. Mountain bike, your pedals hit. So I mean, it was, it was time to be fixed. So. I'm good, pretty excited about that. Uh, went out to the Na- Ogden Nature Center, but I've been helping them with the project they've wanted to do for years. Uh, ripping out some asphalt that used to be a trail and kind of putting in a new piece of a existing trail. So we're almost done there. Just got to get the asphalt out. And then today I just found out we got a bid to do a new trail up Weaver State. Um, the adaptive trail they want to put in from the tennis courts up to the road that'll shake with the parkour course. So. Uh, they wrote a grant for that. We put in for it today. They sent me the. Okay, to get going on that. So I've been talking with Daniel Turner. It's kind of been laid out a little bit, but it will be an adaptive trail. So adaptive bikes can um, get up there. Cause the Weaver State did a grant to get some more adaptive bikes, if you will. Um, so people can take it right from the. Oh, what is Outdoor Rec Center? Get right on the trail and get up towards the parkour course. So.
Nice. That's a good addition.
Yeah, it's going to be, I'm excited about it. It's pretty neat. It's going to be really nice, right next to the new disc golf course they're putting in right next to it. And so next week with the Utah Outdoor Recreation Summit coming to Weaver State on Wednesday, Thursday. We're leading the volunteer stewardship program and we're going to do the part, I worked on the park for course for Weaver State. Uh, trimmed that up, cleaned it up a little bit. It's about an hour, um, for the attendees that want to join. So we'll be leading that at our organization will. So. Uh, I'm pretty excited about that. So, um. And obviously the Ogden Canyon Trail's kind of moving along. So we also put in two hundred thousand dollars to help get their grant. Um, speaking with Jay Louder last week, the grant um, that they procured was about seventy million dollars is what I was told.
Seven?
Seven, uh, six to seven, right in there. And that'll get the bridge and the pipe in across the river and start going up that direction. So, um. You know, we're kind of trying to keep as best tabs as we can on that. Um, so it's near and dear to our hearts, our organization. That's why we were founded in nineteen ninety five. So.
Wait, are you going to be out of a job when they're done?
I uh, I don't think so, but you never know. I could be at a job next week for all, you know, so, um. And then we've just been trying to work with high school mountain bike teams. I met with one of the coaches last week just to figure out a way to to alleviate some of the pressure and also help the community also. You know, kind of the, you know, help them out with their image because they struggle a little bit with as many kids that are on the trails. Um, but also a little more buy-in um, for the kids, you know, and just try to figure out better ways that we can. Work together, um, as community, you know, trail users as well as, you know, have a place for the mountain bike teams to train and work and and everything else. So that's a positive thing, um, that we're doing. And then one thing I'm proud of for us, uh, we launched what's called the Peak Challenge as an organization. So we just, I. Came up with an idea. I thought, well, we might get fifty people do this. And we just said from June to October, you have to summit. Malins, Lewis, Ben Lomond and Mount Ogden. And we have two hundred and fifty people registered to do that. Um, about seventy something people have already finished all four. One person did them all in one push, about fifty miles. Did them all in one go.
She knows who that one person was.
I do, I know him. Yeah, Josh Bryant.
Yeah. Works here.
He works, he works in my department.
Yeah, Josh did that. So he's actually done the peaks separately and but then he went back and did the whole thing in one.
That guy's a machine. Ben Lomond, Lewis, Mayland, and what was the other one?
Uh, Mount Ogden.
Mount Ogden.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's been a really fun community building thing. We also noticed, um, we're getting emails and photos. And there's people that have never summited one of those peaks before in their life. Um, and they're, they took it on with friends and they're just having a great time with them. So. Um, it's been a lot of fun for us.
Me. Good. I didn't know that was going on.
Yeah, so those are definitely a lot of our successes. We've had a really good year, um, in a lot of those ways. Challenges that we still face is staffing, um, just for for funding. You know, it's hard to write grants for operations. We don't have any. Funding that we can count on every year. It's either donations, memberships or farmers markets. Kitchen, you know, couch cushions, whatever it is. So we're working on that. Uh, we did find out it's probably going to be our best interest to start looking for a truck. Um, we have a Mini X that we have to pull around. We have to hire people just to move it. From one location to the next, um, and getting our tools for volunteer nights and and things like that. We.
How big a Mini X did you end up getting?
Just a, just a small one. It's, uh, it's the.
Seventeen, uh, thirteen?
Nope, I don't remember. I just remember the part number and it's, it's got the.
How wide is it?
Closed. It's about thirty-six inches. It's a small one, but it's perfect for the trails we're doing.
Yeah, I've seen it up there.
Yeah, but it, you know, weighs a lot. We can't pull with a normal truck. So we're just pedal people and pay them and. So we do that. And then we've outgrown our office space. So it's been a challenging year there. We're about seven hundred square feet of office space with four people. Part-time people and volunteers. I'm the only.
Where's your office?
The old post office building.
Okay.
Yeah, third floor. There's a wedding going on today. That's the good news. You sometimes you can sneak down for cake. That's why we're button up shirts to work.
There's almost guy at the wedding.
There's those two though. Showered in our sinks before, so. Uh, yeah, I mean, it's definitely a challenge. I, you know, I mean, for me, that's probably our biggest concern is just making sure we can still provide for the community. Uh, with the small staff that we do have and and making sure we're funded there. Um, just a battle every year to to hit numbers and and things like that. So I was trying to find ways to fundraise and. You know, obviously that costs money. We have an author event. Uh, we just got our author, um, secured out of New Mexico. Um, Ann Hillerman, fantastic author and Dark Skies, or Dark Winds, if anybody watches this TV, which I don't as much. Um, a lot of that show is based off her dad's book, so.
I didn't know that.
And then we come to projects where, uh, we do a lot of the, you know, obviously what I call like the instant gratification stuff where community can see the dirt moving and. You know, whether it's sport, we did that bike trail at North Fork Park. It's been an absolute hit. Uh, four-mile directional bike only trail, um, has been great, but. Um, obviously the Piney Loop Pathway is one that we're always chasing, um, for a lot of reasons. And I know, um, the county's been getting as many emails as I have. About a lot of the damage, um, and some of it's actually really dangerous. Some of it's. You know, you could work around, but some is pretty bad. Um, where just, um, people are building and they're putting their cement trucks and everything and just. The trail is gone, um, in some spots and some of it's pretty bad. And that trail's used a lot by the families up there. So we get messaging from. You know, the families have their kids out or, you know, people that are not even that, just. You know, out for a ride, maybe even some athletes out there for an endurance ride or something. So we're chasing that and. Hopefully working the best we can to help, I guess, um, to see what we could do there. But it's, it's getting pretty beat up, um, for sure in spots. Um, and then we also are working right now, we have an engineering firm, um, and we've worked, spoken to the county quite a bit about, uh. Extension on the P L P from River Drive, um, by Snowcrest Junior High and taking that to Liberty Park. Um, and actually, yeah, it's a, it's a big, big undertaking. Um, right as you start past River Drive, we've already talked to the first landowner, uh, the Gears. They're building there right now. Um, it goes right in front of their property on their property and then goes over the river or canal in front of Chambers, uh, property. Um, and we've, I've met with both landowners and they both have granted easements, um, for their property.
You're taking it up the road to Liberty Park?
Correct, on the uh, east side of the one sixty-two.
East side, okay.
Yeah, so we had a, we had a firm look at going on River Road and then on both sides of one sixty-two. Um, and that east side, um, was by far the. Best route, easiest route of the three. Not that any of them are easy. There's a lot of challenges for sure, uh, that we're looking at, but. Um, it's a great project and we've, we've been getting a lot more calls that people have seen us out kind of surveying and obviously with the two landowners we've spoken to. Um, granting easements, which were great conversations for us for sure, uh, for both, with both, uh, property owners. So that's a big one. Um, and I've met with, um, you know, the engineers, I met with Gary and Ashley and everybody trying to get. A game plan together because it's obviously not a free situation. Uh, but as a nonprofit, those are things we can write grants for. Um, projects help. Obviously, there's some uh, impact fees, um, that are out there that, you know, we've spoken about to to access. Uh, but the next step really now is to get our engineers back in now that we've got the easements. And, you know, talk to the county a little bit more to see kind of next steps. Uh, we realize it's. Not a quick and done project, um, but it's, I think, uh, could be a very positive one for sure. Um, especially for a lot of the the kids that are on that street. And if you've been on that road, it's pretty crazy anyway with some of the blind turns.
Pretty tight.
Curves and everything else. So, uh, the engineers we've, we've got P E C have done a fantastic job of, um, getting us some, some. Layout for that and exactly what we need. There's places where we don't need to get easements from property owners. There's right-of-way stuff, but. Um, some areas we do. So, but the Gears and the Chambers are probably the two biggest parcels. Uh, for easements that we've, we've got. So, um, super positive there. And then it comes to our Weaver River Project, um, over on the Weaver County Davis County line where eighty-nine and eighty-four connect. Um, that's been ongoing for quite a while and, um, there's a few pieces that still need to connect to make that a loop that you could get. Basically through Riverdale up to, you know, South Ogden to Twelve Street. Um, so we've been working on that, um, section of trail. Uh, we've got some bids in right now to get a bridge to go from you in a business park over the river, um, to some parcel that we have, uh, that we own. Um, which is the trail on right now. And then two more smaller pedestrian fifty-foot, um, bridges through some of the channels there.
Yeah, that was my, going to be a question. Thanks for covering that.
Yeah, and a great thing about that is we've been working on this project for quite a few years. And two years ago, we established a couple of small channels. Um, that we work with Trout Unlimited on to help the, um, spawn for the bluehead suckerfish, which have been. Really cool, to be honest with you. Um, thousands of little tiny fish that are, you know, not going to all to make it, but more than has ever happened before. Um, but as you probably would think, uh, this winter threw us a curveball and it helped us and hurt us at the same time. It took a little bit of. What we had, uh, built away, but it showed us a little bit more what it could do, um, in the flood. So the two of the small bridges are going to be bigger bridges now.
Good idea.
Just to be safe. Um, but we've also been contacted by one property owner there that, um, wants to sell, um, a piece of their property. So we can put the trail through, which is just another piece. We're about four, four parcels short, um, to connect everything without easements. Um, but the other challenge with that is if you've been along that trail at all, um, with that water and how that river's straightened out over the years. Uh, banks are just gone. Um, there's one section of trail that's completely gone and the people that use it a lot that live down there have made a. Made their own trail, um, you know, like they do, um, which isn't a bad thing. I mean, we want them to get through, but we're also getting pretty close to like. Utah's right-of-way, um, their, their land, D W R, who we work with, and we have meetings with them to see if we can have, get these bits, a piece of their land too. So. Um, and probably one of the bigger challenges, and I think, uh, Jeff Ellis, one of our board members, has spoken to somebody. Uh, it, it, as you all know, probably, uh, that property line between Davis and Weaver County is a little, um. Puzzle is the best way to say it.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
Talking to Commissioner Harvey about that.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's a challenge.
It sounds like it changed again. Cause every time the river changes, the boundary is supposed to, oh, sorry, they didn't approve that boundary change. I just thinking.
But it is like when we do a ramp grant, right? We have to do percentages on some portions because it is Davis County. Um, state grants, um, it is a challenge, is, you know, for us. I'm sure it is for everybody, but, um.
It would be better for you if everything was in Weaver County on that side.
It'd be better for everyone. The community would have their.
I knew the answer to that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, whatever, whatever we can do to push fraud.
Would you get that done? In your spare time?
I mean, I know some, I know some people live closer to that area than others and, you know, um. But it is, I mean, you know, those last two projects, the P L P and Piney Loop Pathway, the W R P, P Weaver River Project. Are definitely our legacy ones that, um, change year to year based on staffing, funding, um, and whatever comes up. So. Uh, we do have a meeting as an organization, uh, with some of the board and our engineers on the Weaver River. Side to see what next steps are. Cause we did get a three hundred thousand dollar grant from, um, the state, uh, to help with that. But, I mean, that's a piece of it, um, for sure, but it's a big, a big piece and we can continue writing grants for that. Um, as well, we got some ramp funding this year on the Weaver County side as well, um, that we'll be using, uh, for that one, so.
Let me interrupt.
Yeah.
So the part that, we know there, we know the trail, uh, from Cottonwood Drive going by. U N A there and going towards Riverdale, that totally rode away that.
For the most part.
Yeah, so I saw the new trail over in there and been on that, so is that part of the, is that the one you were speaking of where they made a new trail?
One of the sections. There's multiples of those, and so we'll, our goal is to get in there, you know, late. End summer, first part of fall when the rivers at the lowest, um, you know, close to winter as well to where we can kind of get down in the banks. And take a better look at what's going on.
Super lot, there's a ton of undercut in there.
Yeah, there's, um, little waterfalls now, um, that I don't even, I mean, I have pictures of them, but I don't know how they start or where they come from, but I know they dump into the river. And what they do, they're just slowly taking that land a little stretched down as the waterfall, so the other banks just start slowly falling in as well. Um, so I think, uh, like I mentioned, when that river's kind of at the lowest, we'll probably go in there and spend multiple days trying to figure out. You know, what we can do as an organization as well as, you know, if we have to move the trail, how do we at least beef up one side of it? And can we get on the outside of it if it's not our property or, you know, not something we already have an easement on, so. And those are. Some headaches sometimes, obviously, as well, but other than that, um, we've had a really successful year, um, to be honest with, as an organization. Especially, um, on the natural surface trails in Weaver County and, you know, some of it obviously on Forest Service. Uh, but we do have great agreements with all property owners and, um. Yeah, it's a, it's a lot of fun, to be honest with you. We have, uh, I mean, uh, we all should know, but our trail system is probably one of the best, period. Without question. I mean, we have people, as you, you all know, from a long way away, just hitting North Fork Park. You know, people are coming down from other some counties and cities because of the rumors and, um, the rumors are true. Uh, they're, they're fantastic, uh, but that's, that's just a piece, um, you know, of that puzzle, so. Anything we can do with the county, we've always said we'd love to, to help in any way and Todd and Jennifer and the Parks Department have been fantastic. Like, can't, can't say enough positive about everything that, um, that they're doing anyway, uh, but also, um. Kind of tag team in some projects as well, where we have a little bit different equipment than they do as well, um, but ultimately, you know. Just trying to figure out a way that, that we could find some funding in any level, way, shape or form. Um, as I mentioned, we do a zero budget, so my job is to say, okay, this year I think we're gonna make this much, so that's how much we're gonna spend. Um, and I'm usually close, but, uh, about October, November, December, I don't sleep very much. The grays come in a little bit thicker, um, but we always make it. Um, we've got a great community for sure and, um. You know, we, we're a good resource. San Juan County called me yesterday. They wanna start a, a trail organization through the county, um, there in Monticello. They called me yesterday to pick my brain, okay, their next steps are.
Right.
Because their trails are disappearing, because no one's taking care of them, um, and so, uh, that's been a great, great conversation, uh, with them. We've been doing it up in Cache County, helping them, Morgan County, um, they want me to come there and speak in one of their meetings. Uh, just find out like an hour before they happen, so I can play, get there. But it's good for us. I, I said when I started this job four years ago, um, this month, that, you know, I wanted people to look at us as the trail organization. Um, and, you know, we, I think, done a pretty good job of that. Um, we have a fantastic board, um. Limited, small staff and I'm losing one to college graduation, uh, this year, which is gonna sting a bit, but, um, yeah, we'll, we'll just keep plugging along, but. But everybody in this room is super savvy, so if there's anything you could think of for us to find some funding, I'd be, I'm all ears.
What, what are we doing with pro, we gave you some project money?
Prop one, um, goes to the projects, um, that doesn't go anything for operations and, you know, um, it's more like the. Prop one this year will be looking at P L P, W R P, the bigger projects, um, we've used, uh, prop one historically to match. So doubling it, um, which we've seen is obviously the best thing to do on these big projects, um, but the, the prop one just doesn't affect. You know, the, the staffing side of things, operation, where we struggle the most.
You can't use prop one money for that, right? If you have more prop one money, could you divert other funds to use for staffing?
Um, probably not, because, um, a lot of the funds we get for projects, um, have to be for projects. So like for, for operations, right, for staff or, you know, rent, all that type of thing. It, right now, a hundred percent comes from donations. Um, private foundation grants that we can get and we see those, um, across the board, getting a little smaller every year. Uh, more historically, it's been a certain amount. Now it's kind of getting smaller, cause there's more nonprofits in the area, obviously, um, and more people in need. Um, so we, we see a hit there and then, um, donations, and those are just a wild card all the time anyway, so we have no. Funding. We actually just started, um, an endowment, um, about a month ago. Uh, we've been around since nineteen ninety five and this has been on my mind for a while, so we talked to board, um, I got them. We've started an endowment. Um, and we're actually trying to figure kind of next steps there, um, and it's just kind of following that same model of, um. You know, how can we count on at least a portion of funding a year, whatever that looks like, but endowments take time to build. So we probably wouldn't even look at anything from that for about five years, if that, um, but met with the president and CEO Tracy Aviary two days ago. Pick his brain a little bit, um, obviously talked to Jonathan at the Nature Center, so anybody I get a chance to bend their ear, I do. Just to see what they're doing and maybe that's different than we are. Um, I think we're doing things right. Um, but we do notice that, you know, a lot of these organizations, and when I go to conferences, there is some supplemental funding somewhere, right? Whether it's city, county, you know, Sam Walton, somebody like that, um, you know, that's, I think. Trying to figure out how we can change our model just a little bit, so when I do the budget, I can say, okay, I know I've got this, so I know we can do this, you know. Uh, it's a challenge for everybody, but, um, I'm here right now.
Good to know.
But it's tough. It is really tough for real. Um, because I think we could do a lot more, as, you know, where we've started a big education program. That's a big focus for what we're doing right now. Is to help people understand how to use the trails, just be courteous to each other, you know, the etiquette triangle has a horse, a mountain bike and a person on foot. But, uh, we know now, um, whether, uh, we've talked to a lot of people in adaptive chairs and. They've been completely honest. I've been out on an adaptive chair on the trails, mind boggling, amazing, what, um, you know, people can do. Um, and they're, they're like, Eric, it's so, this community is so close to being a literally world-class adaptive trail system. Like, there's trails and they're, you know, and they're, it's fantastic. Some of the trails, just small tweaks here and there, they could be adaptive. Um, and, you know, talking to them, like, we don't want all the trails to be adaptive. They understand, you know, single track and, you know, elevation gains and everything else. But there's some trails, there's some in North Fork Park, um, that are already that way, um, and you can go unassisted if, and some have, uh, what they call assist. Or they have someone with them in case they have a tight turn and they have to scoot them, you know, scoot the wheels back a little bit too. And Weaver State's caught on to that with the trail they're putting in there, uh, we're trying to be kind of a leader in that, um, if you will, to, to help with. You know, and we have an adaptive rider on our board now as well, uh, to help us with that, um, and that's super fun, uh, going out with her. Because it just, like I said, I have a hard time a lot of two wheels and there's, there she goes, so.
Wow.
Uh, yeah, education's a big piece for us this year, um, last year and then moving forward, so. That's kind of my hurry, which feel to get good to everybody.
Question. John, is there anything, any way, any avenue, any funding source through the cog? That we can take a portion from, or just designate a portion, uh, like, I'm thinking fund one. Funds that could maybe go towards active transportation in this.
Prop one funds or?
I, I don't know if it's prop one or, yeah, I don't know.
So, for example, a few years ago, WACOG funds were used in Riverdale to build. The pedestrian bridge across I fifteen, okay, so that, it is a possibility, but it, the city would have to sponsor it or, or the county.
But it doesn't cover their ongoing fund need that they need for salaries and my correct.
All of that. What, what the county could give right now would be project-based. That's the, that's the problem. We have money for maintenance, we have money for new trails, those kinds of things. But we don't have money that we can give for operations.
Boys, you know, it'd go a long ways if all of us got together and even in the cities and just put just all fifteen. Put just a little about, just a little bit in there, just for trails and stuff in there to keep. Should help you a long ways.
You know, it absolutely would, but, you know, I, I look at a big picture and how much it would just help everybody, to be honest with you. I mean, the prop one funds have been immense. I mean, it's, I can't even thank, thank enough for the opportunity, you know, use prop one funds, but again. Those projects and the time to do these things is with that, but, you know, I'm on the trails all the time. My wife's on the trails all the time and, um. It's just, it, they're growing, I mean, people are growing. It's just more and more people are on the trails, which we said.
Dick, if we had, and I'm sorry, I've been, if we have, well, came a dollar per resident. You know, you know, whatever a resident was every year or something like that to, to the, and I realize that costs it, he's more money and it's on. That, that, uh, that shoot him two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand a year that he could count.
Maybe through ramp, there's a way to just designate a portion of that that goes toward trail. I, I don't know. I mean, there are some things that we think about. So, and Eric, we've talked to Eric about this and I hope this is defensive, it shouldn't be, but, I mean, Eric's goal is essentially to put himself out of business. Because those trails get taken over by the government entities. That, that's really the end goal. I mean, that, that's what will happen eventually, I think. So Davis County does their trails. Other counties do their trails. It's not a, a nonprofit organization that is forced to, to do that. We don't have it set up that way, and so we work through Trails Foundation Northern Utah. But the county has signed an agreement that we do have the maintenance responsibilities on those trails. So the first step has already been taken in that progression and we, I mean, we, we've talked about that. Back with Mark, with Eric, I mean.
W F R C, if we could do something with W F R C or something through there. Well, what about, uh, can you tie into any of the UDOT active transportation trails?
So we're, I mean, there's a, a meeting in a couple of weeks up at the university on the new, um.
Free gates.
Yeah, well, on the.
Bay Brown's for all, or St. Street.
Uh, trail, some.
Cause they've got fifty million in that.
Yeah, and so it's just trying to figure out exactly how that works, really, cause I know, uh, everybody's excited about it, but there's just a lot of.
And I'm not, I'm not sure whether, when that bill was written, whether it excluded operations. I, I wouldn't be surprised if it did, but.
And some of them do let you do like project management fees within that, but it's, it's a very small percentage, um, of those things.
You start chip with the way it over.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, you might wanna check on that and then, uh, you know, if there needed to be some tweaks in that allocation. I think we've got a, you know, a good cause to go to the legislature and say, look, this, you know, we got great projects, but we need some help on the O and M side. How are you, sorry, one last question, I'm sorry to divert from this. How are we, the Golden Spoke, how are we through West Haven? We were, that's where the, we had one little kind of a little tweak through there, that you go underneath the freeway at the confluence and then you get out there. How is it now?
Actually rode it this morning, it's funny enough, um, but yeah, I rode, um, just past nineteen hundred there on Twelve Street, that area. Uh, but, I mean, it's always in decent shape.
So if there is, now you, can you be off the road, the whole, uh, on that Golden Spoke now? Does it go from the confluence of the river, goes down and then it goes out to right in there, uh, West Haven area, then it should go left and it heads.
I think you're on the road after, not, so there's a, a loop in there after, um, what is it, west of nineteen hundred. There's a loop, but it doesn't have a connection somewhere right now that I know about.
Okay.
I think it has road connections.
Yeah, road connections, yeah, yeah, it's on the road, for sure. There's a lot of, uh. That, uh, construction equipment are always on those roads too, um, but yeah, it doesn't connect just on the, the pathway now.
That's a fact of life anymore, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Well, good, anything else, Eric?
I don't.
Help you with. We sure appreciate you coming in and giving us an update.
Yeah, no, I appreciate everything the county does and everybody around here. I mean, we're always positive, so I appreciate, I appreciate it. For sure, and I know what the organization does.
And we owe you thanks for hauling us into the Utawa Reservoir this winter, when the snow was over our heads and we wanted to. Maintain that concrete structure.
That was unbelievable.
Run Gleason, give some hitchhikers a ride in with our equipment to go.
Did he?
Maintain that, so that was nice of you guys.
Hey, go to, Eric, Stephanie says there's trail grant funding through E D A. You may wanna just.
Yeah, I think we're in the process of writing a grant right now.
Okay, great.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Is that o- okay for, uh, O and M or is it?
That I don't know.
Yeah, and some of those, there's, you know, we, we definitely write any grant we can for operations and when they, they let you write for operations. We write the hundred percent grant for operations, um, because they're so few and far between, but those are also a lot smaller.
Yeah.
Funded as well, but.
For sure.
But yeah, we, we definitely look everywhere, I think, on, on stairs, so, thank you, Stephanie.
Can you do a Venmo, like, sign on your trails, like?
Well, so we have, uh, we've done like Q R code stuff.
Yeah.
We, we're trying to stay away from signage, just because I know a lot of people on the trails, they don't like to see it places, like kiosks are okay. Um, but then it also comes down to, you know, if it's twenty second street, it's an Ogden City trailhead, do they want us, you know. Getting funding, uh, for something that they have O T N supposedly working on or, you know, we've talked to Todd. He, he allowed it, especially on Spork where we did build that trail, um, so we've, we've looked at those avenues as well. And there, I've looked at other counties and other states on what they do. They have stuff in trailhead, some of them. Uh, there's some cool stuff in Colorado where they have like a machine, uh, in the parking lot that you don't have to pay, but it's like, hey, if you wanna donate. And they do pretty well with those as well, so, um, but then that costs money to set up and everything else, but.
Cause yeah, that's the one thing that amazes me about the trails is it's free.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
They're incredible. Amazing many, for free.
We did a study on that North Fork area two weeks ago, Eric, just to see what kind of traffic vehicle volume we're getting. Eighteen hundred cars a day.
It doesn't surprise me at all.
And we put them right as you're heading north and you cross the river, where you take, take the left-hand turn for it to head up to North Fork. Or you can keep going straight to the shooting range. Eighteen hundred cars a day are headed up to North Fork. Into the park?
Yeah.
Up that direction.
Well, wow, and that's the thing, I mean, just the more we see, the maintenance we've done historically, we've had to increase in the same areas. Because it's just they get hit so much harder now, you know, where before you could, you know, not really work on certain pieces of trail for years. You know, because it wasn't, but now it's, I mean, every day we're getting emails, pictures, hey, this is getting bad here, this is getting bad here. And we have one person on our trail crew because of funding right now, so we're pretty, I'm, I'm out there more than I like to be sometimes.
You take one of those, uh, little money feeders and, uh, put it next to the damaged trail.
Yeah.
Make it a, make it a mobile one.
Right?
Well, we try to talk people into this. I'd love to come help, but I don't have time. I'm like, well, funny enough.
We'll take your money, right?
Hey, thanks, Eric.
No, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Hey, commissioners, I just got a text from David Reed. He said, David Reed Fire.
Fire.
Fire chief, yeah, uh, deputy fire chief, he said, decent wildland fire by Wolf Creek. They have it contained, but they almost lost a couple of homes.
By Wolf Creek? Really?
Yeah.
Wow. When did that start?
So it must have been within the last hour.
Wow. Okay, already evacuations?
Uh, no evacuations. They got it contained. There was one area with water that they were able to contain quickly. The other area didn't have water. That's where they almost lost a couple of homes.
Boy.
So.
He didn't say how big of a footprint of a fire start, did he?
No, he said he'll give me more information later.
Now'd be a perfect time to recede that with stuff if we wanna get something going.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, with all, yeah. Just a real, that's interesting. Okay, we're, uh, getting to our budget meeting here.
Make sure we got your number to Sarah Swans and she fills out all her letter together and it'll say it's at Will and.
You talk to her? Afternoon.
Alright. See you, Ricky. Jeez.
Fascinating. You can, all you'd like, it's public meeting, right?
Yeah.
I don't know who C O C O is.
Who?
Scott, did you get this email from U C F on our loss ratio?
I don't, I just came in.
If it just came in, I haven't seen it.
You got a copy, Ricky?
Okay. Is I on it?
If you're fortunate, if I wasn't, yeah.
How are we? There were forecasts and some pretty big increases. Have you read it? I guess they said, well, we know our loss ratio is about eighty-six percent. Not fantastic.
Right, eighteen less than one's good, alright.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it could be worse. It could be our, like our medical.
Yeah. Glass half full, half empty, well.
Yeah. Okay. Scott, this is your show. We're here at the four o'clock discussion regarding twenty twenty-four budget. Go ahead.
You want me to close the door?
Yeah, why don't you?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Bond's going to be here, so I'm going to ask you this question at the end. I'm going to tell you at the beginning. Okay, so in order for, well, okay, I'll start at the beginning. Thank you. Okay. We are looking at focusing on compensation during this budget. We talked about that. Uh we heard Sarah's recommendation this morning, which is something Sarah and I have talked about. Uh several times, which would be a three, two, two, two um phased out, rolled out, what that would cost in terms of. Cash out the door would be seven point eight. Of which four point eight would be in the general fund and then the rest split amongst different funds. We cannot afford that with our current structure. Uh if we were to go out and do a truth and taxation hearing and raise the tax rate six point four percent. We could generate half of what we need, half, half of what we need. And the other half would come from savings within the county, of which I think we've almost identified enough to hit that number. So that works for the general fund. So so these, these are just numbers we're throwing out there. We don't have to make any decision on these as to what the rates are, what amounts or anything like that. But if we want to consider something of a three, two, 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 as we discussed. We need unfortunately to do a truth and taxation hearing or advertise for, before we actually go through our full budget cycle, just because we're a calendar year and that's the way that. The state makes us do it. So the only decision that we need to make today is, are we willing to hold a truth and taxation hearing? We don't even have to decide the amounts. We just need to know if we're willing, because then I'm going to tell Mr. Bond to order about three or four thousand-ish dollars worth of paper. From our printer.
They just need to get geared up.
Yeah, and then they get ready and do that. And then we have until John Bond and I are wrestling on this. He's telling me I need to know by. Like Tuesday, the twenty sixth, right? And I'm telling him I need. He gave me till noon on Tuesday, the day after we start our budget hearings and I want enough time. I'm trying to, I'm trying to buy an extra day or two to have a a a pre-budget hearing with you and then lay out this sort of stuff and we're trying to get it all scheduled, but we need to know. That first week that we're holding budget hearings, so we won't even meet through all the budget hearings yet. We won't be through any of the wrap-ups yet.
That's when you need the rate.
That's when I need the rate, that the upper bound of the.
We don't need to give you the flyer, we'll give you the max.
Yeah, and so what I would propose is as we continue to go through there and continue to trim on different requests and stuff like that, that we would set the rate of what it would need to be to cover. What we considered a reasonable compensation increase. And then as we continue to identify different areas that we say we would whittle that amount that we need to increase down accordingly. Um but we can't go up, we can always go down.
Okay.
So what we're asking for now is a a go-no-go for holding a truth and taxation hearing. If you say go, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to start working on the actual presentation of what I would recommend that it would be. I'm going to bring that back to you and present it to you um at the very beginning of our budget hearing. So you have a wrap-up meeting at the very beginning before you've heard anything else. You know, just to kind of get an idea of what it looks like and whether you're in favor of that or not. And then we would need to tell John Bond, yes, including in the tax notice. And then would go through our budget hearings and hopefully refine that number down a little bit.
Okay.
So that's kind of why we're here is, is that an acceptable plan to you? Am I okay to tell John? To go ahead and let the printer know that we're going to hold the truth and taxation hearing. Um worst case scenario, we decide not to, we don't submit any of the data and hopefully the printer's nice to us. And it gives us, doesn't charge us, but worst case scenario, we're out three or four thousand dollars, which isn't, I mean, it's. It's money we don't want to be out, we don't want to waste, but it's not.
We don't, I don't think, my personal opinion is I don't think we have a choice right now not to head that direction.
You know, I just was thinking about that in my own personal career. And it's always good to do the right thing at the right time. And uh that's just what it is. I'm, I I think we should order paper.
Okay, Sharon? Okay, you got the okay for paper. Why don't we just tell Mr. Bond right now, order paper? Hey, did that take you by surprise or?
No, I'm just kind of working through all this. I'm good, I'm good. I got a lot of things just flying around in my head. And if you're comfortable with giving me a dollar amount, which converts into a tax rate. As soon as we can, that last week of September, good, it just helps our schedule so we can keep moving through, but the sooner the better. Tuesday's great, but noon.
But for a, for a banana cream pie, he offered me Wednesday.
Wednesday's actually two pies right now, Thursday would be three.
How would, what about a keg line?
I will share.
Okay.
Go for Thursday, we can all help you.
And not a say banana big pie.
Okay, wow.
It's banana big pie from years. Actually from Sandy's, but I can't do that anymore, so it has to go from years then. So the sooner the better is great, okay?
Yeah. Now, Scott, when can you, so let's go back to your seven point six million, I heard, I thought I heard you say.
Yeah.
Is a total six point four percent increase pays for half of that. Did I hear that right or not?
So, so let me, let me quote some numbers. So because we're gonna, and I'm sorry, Steph, I pulled the wrong number, because we're going to, if you approve the plan to phase. The merit over based off of when people started it, actually. Yeah, it would only cost us seven point one million.
Okay.
So we'll save a little bit of money on that. So and then um then we have to kind of split the conversation down because I can, I think I can make it work in the general fund.
Sure.
I can make it work in the municipal services fund. I can't make it work right now in the health department fund. There are too much funding from grants and fees. I need permission from you guys to go out and work with them and I've already mentioned this to them that I didn't give them amounts, but I've mentioned to them that. If we do this, I need to sit down with you and we need to look at your fees to make sure your fees are covering. I need to know when your grant positions are funded through.
Yeah.
If they can pick up any of this extra and then we do have. I would propose that if we do this increase, we do it straight across the board on all of our lines. So every line, all five of those lines, so the general operations, the the flood control, the the health department, the library, I mean, all of them. What I would do then is, so we would advertise it as.
Has to be.
Yeah, but then I would take the money from the flood control and push it down into the health department. We we other, we can talk about however you want to do that, but that's why I'm saying that would help them afford that.
They've got enough money in their reserve on and and they need to look at their fees and be healthy as a business. And I don't want to take money from the flood control. Well, that's just me. I want to, I don't want to take money from there.
Well, and we could do that because flood control right now, we're we're doing okay. We're still building up a reserve in order to do some of these big projects, so it could always use some more money. But uh the health department, I'm I'm happy to go back to them and say, look, figure out a way through your fees and other stuff to cover this.
Yes.
It's going to be hard for them, but that's okay. If that's what we want to do, that's the direction I will tell them.
No, that's where I am. I would prefer we go there first.
Okay.
I'm with Commissioner Harvey that.
Okay.
They need to take a look at that. They need to take a look at their staffing, just like we're asking some other departments to do.
Okay.
I think it's time for them to, you know, get a little more serious about sweeping money out of the corners, which means cutting some costs.
I'm happy to do that, yes.
They wanted to be independent with that board change, the boards changing makeup and let those guys figure that out. That's such a part of how it goes.
I'm I'm happy to push back. I did tell them that initially and they came back with, you know, Weaver County only gives us seven dollars per person and everybody else gives eleven. And I said, that's a commission discussion, that's not a me discussion, but I will push back on them and say, look, we need to come up with a plan for you guys to fund this with your own. Fees and grants and such.
So is that a, is that a true story about us seven, everybody? I know that we've heard that. Is that factual?
I have not verified the claim. I will verify it before.
I would like to, I'd like to see how we stack up against the others.
That's not a Morgan contribution too.
Morgan contributes eleven. Is what they're telling me. They tell me Morgan contributes eleven, we contribute seven.
Per resident.
Per resident, seven dollars per resident per year and Morgan contributes eleven. So I I will.
And that's general fund dollars.
No, well, that comes from the tax rate, so they have their own tax rate.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'll verify that. So um the library is going to be fine with that as well. They would be able to, if we were to do that increase, they'd be able to afford theirs. The only other funds that we would need to look at would be the garage, the animal shelter, which means we would have to adjust the garage rates up accordingly to. To cover those fees and then the animal shelter, that cost will eventually be passed through to the cities.
Okay, well, the health department has their own line item.
They have their own line item, but their their tax contribution is not that big as a percentage of their total budget. Because half of what they get is from grants and a and about another thirty percent is from fees, so you only have about twenty percent that's from taxes.
Okay.
So a five percent increase in their taxes or six percent only give them two percent of their revenue.
Listen, if it if that number seven percent is true and we go to truth and taxation, then we need to say, hey, look. Our health, we're we're cutting these everywhere we can. Our health's only seven, everybody else is eleven. Where else do you, we can't cut anymore. This is where we gotta be, where we gotta be. It just helps add to the credibility of the story.
Good. So I'll come back with those different scenarios.
Yeah.
And as long as we set it, what the upper bounds of what we think is reasonable, we can always lower it.
Okay.
Transport station fees will have to be addressed as well, eventually.
You just raised those.
Well, we raise them every, well, we potentially raise them every year.
Yeah.
But we would look at the transfer station, just like any of the other enterprise funds, and we would say, look, we got to set it to cover the costs.
Yeah.
Just like everybody else, if fuel goes up, we're gonna have to raise it too, you know, I mean, it's just is what it is unfortunately.
Okay.
So if that's the, if you're okay with that, I'll proceed down that plan. I'll have, I mean, my idea would be. Once we get a go-no-go on the amount that we start putting that information out there that like we did last time, we built a website. Put some good information out there so the public could see what our plan is, why we need it. We have very good examples of our attorneys. Killing us with needing their money just to to be able to fill positions and they're not the only example, so. I think we can make a good case as to why we need this. And I'll also show where we're identifying savings so that we can show, you know, we're asking for seven dollars, but we're only really asking for three because we found another three or four on our own. So I think, I mean, I'd like to uh, I'd like to gather that, get it ready, present it to you guys for your approval and then when you're ready, start putting that message out there.
Okay.
We may also want to consider having um town halls.
Mm-hmm.
So that it's not the six-hour.
Yep.
Six-hour commission meeting where it's just everything, we break it up and take, take the shots.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
After the notice goes out, we need to, maybe even on that notice, we need to put the list of town halls. We could do those town halls like. We did in here, those other things, we can do those electronic town halls.
Uh-huh.
That'd be good, then everybody can sit at home and, yeah, that actually makes some sense.
We we published a lot of information, the last one, and we didn't have anyone show up.
We went to the Upper Valley, we did. It was the Lower Valley one in Plain City that didn't have.
Upper Valleys, I remember, we had quite a few.
Yeah, we had twenty or thirty.
Did you do electronics ones last time?
I don't remember, I I'm not, uh, don't remember the town halls, but I remember at the hearing with the county commission, there was hardly anybody there. This was two times ago, remember, we were very active in promoting.
Oh, yes, you're talking about the actual commission meeting.
The actual commission.
Because I think we laid a lot of the concerns.
And again, comparison to the ones before that, that went until like one in the morning.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. We did town halls last time when we did the municipal service fund increase. I thought that was a very good example.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that same model.
Okay. That seemed to work.
Okay, and again, we're not making any decisions now. We're just, I'm going to bring all this back to you that first week and we'll just have to discuss it. Towards the beginning of the budget session as opposed to the end like we would like to normally do.
Yeah, okay. Well, I don't think we got a choice. Okay, all right, move ahead.
Thank you.
Get us the number.
It's like the vacuum company. Sucks.
Well, you know, quite frankly, good share of this is, I mean, ninety percent of this is out of our control. We can blame the state for the AG's office, we can look at inflation, I mean, it's not like we have a choice.
We we don't really have much of a choice if we want to be able to fill our positions.
Yeah.
And and unfortunately, some of the positions that we have right now, we can't even fill with good quality candidates.
Right.
You know.
But it is, what the commission has done is working. We uh are open position that we put lower prosecutor. We had nine applications come in.
Really?
Remarkably different.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nine applications.
And good applications.
Good, it's good. Okay.
So it's bear, bearing fruit.
Or corn, whatever you like. Chair motion to adjourn. Wait, hold on, we're not done yet. Huh? We got a closed session coming up. Sorry, Mr. Crockett. I'm going to clear that order out of order. Okay, so let's go ahead, declare all you want. So we got a four twenty-five, we're actually. Are you, are you taking this or, as much as it's a closed session, I don't think it matters that we start early.
No.
You're fine. Uh, Corson, uh, he should, this is not Marion's later one.
It could be quick.
We should be.
We've been through this, all right. Chair motion to uh go into closed session to discuss exchange or lease of real property, parcel swap. Thank you. Do we have a second? We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're in closed session. Let's cut the.